About now, is it working?
Yeah.
Okay. I call the special meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission of June 22 to order. If you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the representative public, for which we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. Mr. Villalobos, do you want to make the TV coverage announcement, please, and the roll call?
I can't get much closer or I'm going to swallow it.
Thank you, Mr.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I'll try and project.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSPTV Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, Santa Maria Valley, San Maria and Orchid Areas. Okay, we'll work on it. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Godstinker?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Idelson?
Here.
And Commissioner Overall?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Burrows, I believe, is recusing for item number one today.
Next, Ms. Black, would you like to give us the agenda status report and the projection report, please?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This morning, we have two items on your agenda. The first item is the Coral Casino compliance briefing. And following that, we will be moving upstairs. We'll do a training with the planning commission. We'll have lunch. So that's what your day looks like. In terms of the projection report, if you'd like me to move on to that?
Please.
We do have a hearing scheduled next month on July 27 with the commission. There are a number of small items on that day, but it looks as though there are enough items to justify having a Montecito Planning Commission hearing on July 27. I'm still working on the August 24 hearing. I'll let you know next month if we will indeed have that hearing. Right now, you can see, there's just a consent item on and a small hearing item, and we'll see what we can do about combining hearings for your commission so that you don't come in just for half an hour. So we'll be monitoring that, and we'll let you know at your July hearing whether or not that hearing will go forward.
Right.
That's all I had to report this morning.
The next item on our agenda is public comment, and that's a period reserved for anything that is not on our agenda. So if there -- I have no speaker slips. Is there anybody that wishes to address something other than what we're here for, probably? Okay, in that case, I'll close public comment. We'll move on to commissioners' informational briefings. Any commissioners?
Nothing, sir. Nothing to report.
I have one item to report. I attended the Land Use Committee of the Montecito Association meeting earlier this month specifically to hear the presentation by the folks on the plans for the YMCA. There were a number of good questions from both the Land Use Commission and the audience. It was a good presentation by the folks from the YMCA. I suspect we'll all be hearing a great deal more about it, and eventually, it will come our direction. But as it moves forward in the community, I would encourage people to follow it with interest. It's a sizable project, and it will take some time to get done, and we should be informed before it comes this way. Next, I'll move to the approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? Commissioner Phillips?
I move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Next, Dr. Russell, you want to give us the director's report?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. Since your last Montecito Planning Commission hearing on 5/25, there have been a number of board hearings that I can report on. On June 7, there were a number of items that were of some interest. First of all, there was some discussion about a CREF grant that was going to enter into a contract for a previously approved grant for the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum, their Belly of the Whale Project Phase II. There was some discussion as to whether or not the board wanted to redirect that money to some other, possibly even, public safety coastal use. And since that time, staff has been researching that possibility. But it's our understanding that the board no longer is interested in redirecting that money, although certainly, we could accept and evaluate proposals for CREF money for public safety uses projects in the coastal zone. There was also an item on a report presented to the board on ag grading exemptions and how they're done in various other nearby counties in comparison to ours. And the board was interested enough in that topic that they wanted to bring it back on July 12 for a full departmental agenda item hearing. So we will be doing that. There was also a report presented on hydrologic fracturing, the controversial technique that increases the oil and gas yield from wells. And there was a lot of testimony there, and we will be going back for more on that on August 2. The reason being that a representative from Dogger will actually be here. They will be here both -- and also from State Lands Commission, but the State Lands Commission is here for the offshore summerland oil wells issue, which will also be coming back on potential leaking oil wells off the coast there, coming back on August 2. So there'll be more discussion at that time. There was a development plan for the La Barge Vineyard in the Lompoc area, and that was approved with absolutely no testimony or even a staff report. The entire hearing consisted of a motion to approve. The next week was, of course, the 15th, 17th, 19th was the budget. And needless to say, we are in challenging times as far as our budget is concerned. The PND budget was approved as submitted. We had anticipated the need for as many as seven or eight layoffs. That has, through attrition, getting a grant, getting a code enforcement lien that was paid and allowed us to apply to public counters, that ended up reducing the reduction in services. And we will still have some layoffs, but there'll be a much smaller number, not eight. In the end, we'll have to see as we move over, as we move through the upcoming months, how business goes. But it was significantly reduced from that. Yesterday, we had a hearing, and there were a couple items of interest. One was a report to the board on historic incentives, that is incentives for landmarking historic structures. It was a summary of all the different existing state, local, federal incentives, as well as actions that the board might consider taking, some of which have costs that would incentivize the landmarking of historic structures. There was enough interest in that item that it also will be coming back on August 9. And one of the items that will be considered, there's a large number of items, but one item which I have had a lot of personal experience with in my previous planning career is the Mills Act, because that ends up being a very, should the board decide to consider that, it ends up being a very popular program and very effective, however, it comes with costs, significant costs to the county potentially. We initiated nonrenewal of an ag contract in the Santa Inez Valley where someone basically was not doing any agriculture, and so their contract was placed into nonrenewal by the county. And also, there was the set hearing for August 2 on community wildfire protection plans. Now, while the community wildfire protection plan from Mission Canyon is not, of course, in Montecito, it certainly, I think, is of interest to Montecito, the community, because community wildfire protection plans are being produced everywhere throughout the county, including Montecito. And so not only will the specifics of the Mission Canyon plan be considered, but also a general process will be presented by the CEO's office as to how the county will process these plans in regard to the county approval, which is necessary for such plans. That concludes my report for today, but I would be happy to answer any questions on those items or any others.
I have only one question, Dr. Russell, and that is, any current sense of how permit requests are going as compared to prior periods and?
Mr. Chair, discretionary permit activity in North and South County is at an all-time low.
Okay. Mr. Idelson?
Okay. Question I have is if Montecito wanted to have a fire protection plan, in fact, that they are a separate, we have a separate fire district, would it still require county approvals?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, yes, it would. And it's my understanding that one is in process. And if you look at the process, it requires that the local government basically approve of the plan as one of the entities, the local government, the fire department. So there would be the need to bring any plan that is in the unincorporated area forward to the Board of Supervisors for their collective action.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we'll move on to our standard agenda, and our first and only regular item is --
Do you hear me?
I must have awoken with marbles in my mouth this morning. David, you want to read into the record, agenda item number one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a report compliance, on the compliance briefing for the Coral Casino project.
And I think, first up, Diane, Ms. Black, you have any comments you wish to make?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. You have quite a bit of material on this item. You have a staff memo reviewing the project's compliance with its conditions of approval. You have two fairly substantial letters, one from Mr. Weston and one from Richard Monk. Mr. Weston's on behalf of the members, and the letter from Richard Monk on behalf of the Biltmore Coral Casino. We've also received a number of other letters. One of those letters is an anonymous letter, and I know I've gotten questions about what should the commission do with that letter. And I would simply accept the letter. We aren't asking your commission to take action today. You can simply accept it into the record and review it as you wish. This is a different item for the planning commission to hear. Really, this is a briefing on the compliance of the Coral Casino with its conditions of approval, and whether or not it's operating in compliance with those conditions. And that's the focus of our hearing today. And we are, again, not asking the commission to take any action. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Drew and Ms. Lance for the staff presentation.
Before we do that, I wonder if we shouldn't take care of a couple housekeeping items in terms of ex parte communication?
Oh, sure.
And how about the letter? Do you wish to accept those at this point?
Mr. Chair, because you're not taking any action, I don't think you have to do anything to accept. I just wanted to make it clear what I was recommending in terms of those letters.
Let's just do the ex parte real quickly. Ms. Godstinker?
Yes, I did have a conversation with Mr. Weston by phone, I think, about a week ago.
Mr. Phillips?
I've spoken to a number of members, and I had a discussion with Mr. Weston as well.
Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I spoke with a couple of members, and I had a meeting with Mr. Weston.
I have spoken with Mr. Weston, a couple of members, and I also had a meeting with Mr. Rayner.
Mr. Chair, I guess I should additionally mention that should information come up that, should information that I heard from Mr. Weston or members not come up that I'm privy to, I will mention it.
Okay, clear. Thank you. We can proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Just a second. Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I have a question of staff, county council, as far as what limits are on us as commissioners right now in this hearing, and what is expected of us to respond?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, today, this item is agendized for a briefing. So the action that is asked or requested of your commission is just to receive the report. So it's simply informational. Staff will give its presentation, and then whoever would like to speak during public comment has that option as well. And then, in the end, the action is for you to receive the report. Does that address your question?
Okay, but we're, we could have our comments, our interpretation of what we're hearing, and respond to it. That's all within the bounds. No?
Yes. And, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, yes, that's correct. You can make individual comments and responses to the information that you hear, and I'll be listening as we go along. So if I need to step in or give you an information, I will.
Very good. Please proceed.
Good morning, excuse me, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Kevin Drew, and I'm a supervising planner in development review, recent transplant from the Energy Division. This is the first time in 20 years that I've been before your commission. With me today is Veronica Lance, and she is our permit compliance planner for the South County. And Veronica will be making the bulk of the presentation today. If you look up on the PowerPoint presentation, you'll see that we're going to present to you an issue summary in responses, and in, under this category, Veronica will go through her permit compliance evaluation and present her conclusions. Then, we thought it appropriate to provide, mostly for the benefit of those in the audience and watching on television, a relevant permit background information presentation on both the Biltmore and the Coral Casino to demonstrate how long those facilities have been around and how rich the permitting history is on both of those projects. Following that, we'll have a number of photographs that we'd like to show, both you and the audience. Then we'll go to our conclusions and recommendations, and then we'll try to answer any questions that your commission might have. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Lance, and she'll begin by describing the seven conditions that were presented to us in the letter from Mr. Weston.
So would it be, just to be clear, you would prefer us to hold our questions until you finish the presentation?
Mr. Chair, that's at your discretion. It's a rather short presentation, I'm thinking maybe five or eight minutes.
Okay. Let's hold the questions till the end, then. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Closer. Okay. We're here before you to review my compliance findings on the Coral Casino. On February 15, we received a letter from Mr. Weston outlining numerous allegations of noncompliance with the conditions of approval, and he had requested nine actions to be taken as well. The letter contained many issues, and I've tried to make it as succinct as possible by limiting it to these particular conditions. Obviously, we can talk about the whole project. I did review all 90 conditions as part of this review, despite just what was listed in Mr. Weston's letter. Condition, I'm going to give a brief overview of each of these conditions. Condition 15 refers specifically to the Sunday brunch that's held at the Biltmore every Sunday, and priority parking being given to Coral Casino members in the northeast parking lot. Condition number 18 refers to special events and group events that must be limited to 50 people or fewer between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., but can exceed those numbers after 5:00 p.m., and also can exceed those numbers on Monday through Friday as well. Condition number 20 refers primarily to parking lot limitations and requirements. A parking lot attendant is employed in all the lots. They are there from 7:00 to 3:30 p.m. The condition requires 7:00 to 3:00. They are there an additional half hour. Condition number 22 is really the heart of the Coral Casino operation. It lists the number of permanent members, the limitation on seasonal members, the list of, the limitation on the number of members that, from reciprocal clubs that may use the facilities. Most importantly, it talks about the dual use by the Biltmore Hotel guests who may use the Coral Casino facilities, general things such as outdoor music limitations. It repeats appropriately so that the Coral Casino, the activities shall be those normally associated with a social swim and tennis club, a private club, the use of the restaurant Sundec. Condition number 23 is also an extremely important condition. They all are. But 23 concerns the Coral Casino management meeting on a regular basis with the Coral Casino members. That is required. Condition number 63 is a twofold condition. The first part of it was that a hotel campus and Coral Casino parking plan was to be submitted at the time of project approval. It was. The second phase of that was in the second year of operation. Information was to be provided to planning and development, and then referred to your commission on the high and low season parking occupancy. That report was not submitted to planning and development, permit compliance staff thus not given to your board, your commission. The applicant has agreed to compile that information in this high season and low season, and then will forward it to planning and development, which will forward it on to your commission upon receipt. The last commission condition, excuse me, concerns condition number 65, which had to do with the valet turnout and the bicycle racks. The valet turnout is in place, and the bicycle racks are in place. In Mr. Weston's letter, he identified nine actions that he was requesting that your commission or the county take action on. As Ms. Black explained, this is just a hearing for you to receive our briefing, but I felt it fair to identify what his actions were that he was requesting. The first is that to find the owner in noncompliance. The second was to limit the use by hotel guests to the Coral Casino facilities. The third was requiring nonmembers use the separate Tides entrance. The fourth was limit the Tides use. The Tides restaurant can be used by Coral Casino members, Coral Casino guests, guests of the Biltmore Hotel and their guests. Guests of the Biltmore Hotel are not allowed, or, excuse me, let me rephrase that. Guests of guests at the Biltmore Hotel are not allowed to use the Coral Casino facilities, such as the pool, but they are allowed to use the Tides restaurant. In my briefing, I stated guests of the hotel guests were allowed to use the Coral Casino facilities. That is in error. That should be noted. So it's just guests of the hotel who may use the Coral Casino facilities. The guests of the guests of the hotel may use the Tides restaurant. The last issue, or the fourth issue, fifth, excuse me, was enforce the owner's member consultation. Make sure that they are meeting on a regular basis. A secondary clause condition was require the owner to negotiate with the members in good faith. He requested that we take action to eliminate the restrictions for the lawn and patio. There are no restrictions for the lawn and patio. The Coral Casino members are allowed to use it by reservation. Provide the members committee name list. There was no condition that required that, but it's been my understanding recently that information has been provided to the members that perhaps could be confirmed by one of the public speakers. And the final was find the owner responsible for not building Plan B, as earlier discussed in the original historic rehabilitation plan, development plan review. This is a, this was an interesting background. Clearly, there are tremendously, many more permits than are showing here. But I thought it was a good example of the incredible history. The Biltmore started in 1927. You know, we're 84 years long into that. The Coral Casino was created and constructed in '37. The two have always been used in tandem. The two parcels are different parcels, but they have been owned by the same property owners. They have changed through the years, but they've always been owned in tandem. And the Coral Casino has always been a part of the Biltmore Hotels' sharing of activities. In 1978, the first conditional use permit was approved. In 1999, or '98, a development plan. It was revised in 2003 as per the historic rehabilitation plan. Simultaneously, when the development plan was under review, a 2004 amendment had been submitted to change a few minor issues. And the final and last action was an '07 amendment, which deleted a condition and actually modified a couple conditions, one of which opened the opportunity for Coral Casino members to use the Biltmore Hotel spa as well. Previously, it had just been for the guests of the hotel, but now Coral Casino members are allowed to use that spa as well. This is separate from the Coral Casino spa. So you can see, it's an incredible history of these two parcels. These are some beautiful photos of both of these properties, and we'll just let you enjoy So in response and in conclusion, we looked at all 90 conditions of approval, and what I did find was that some materials were missing, of which we requested or were located, and we got those reports. One condition that's not referenced in here, it is, perhaps in my staff report, it is that condition number 52, unrelated to really anything to do with the Coral Casino, but drain filter changeout reports were to be submitted to planning and development. That had not occurred when I contacted the owner's representatives. That information was provided to me and is now in my records. In addition, as I previously mentioned, condition number 63, which required the parking occupancy rates in the second year of operation, was not provided to permit compliance. It will be done in this high season and low season. That information will be submitted to me, and I will forward it on to your commission. We determined that they're in compliance by what submittals have been given to us, by various site visits before my time in permit compliance during construction, also by sign-off by building and safety that they were in compliance with the approved plans. And we ask that you receive and accept this compliance briefing as we find that the Coral Casino is operating consistent with their permit conditions at this time. I am most available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Idelson?
Yeah. I have a question about the 90 conditions. First of all, that you determined that they were in compliance, on 90 of them. Could you give me some insight into how you collected that information, that they were in compliance?
Chairman Overall, Commissioner Idelson, of course, I can't. A few of the conditions required that they submit information annually or biannually, which they do. That information is attached in the staff report. They provide occup- They provide numbers of special events and Tides events as well as spa event numbers. So information is provided to us by the applicant. I look at the condition to see if they're meeting those numbers. For example, condition, bear with me just a moment. One condition required that they submit, I'm sorry, bear with me one moment. I believe it's condition number 64. That was at a minimum for the first two years of operation, the applicant shall prepare a compliance report listing the number of members, member events, special events. They have provided that every year, not just in the first two years of operation. I could not find it in the file originally. I did locate it and then requested additional information from the representatives of the owner.
Okay. So let me understand, then the data was supplied by the owner, or by the applicant, and it was that data that you distilled and determined that they had the 90 areas of compliance? Is that right?
Of those conditions that had a reporting component, that is correct, Commissioner Idelson.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just elaborate a bit. So there are a variety of different conditions that are contained within these 90 conditions. Some were applicable when the project was being constructed. Some are only applicable to the Biltmore Hotel. Some are operational conditions. Some are kind of one-time conditions. Some of those operational conditions are verified through, are complied with through reports that are submitted by the Coral Casino. That's how the condition was set up. And so what Veronica explained was one of those, but there are a number of conditions that required, that we check things in the field or verify compliance in different ways. So it really depends on the condition.
Other questions at this point from the commission?
The record should reflect that there's 92 conditions and not 90. Isn't that correct?
Two, Commissioner Phillips, Chairman Overall, should have done it the opposite way. There actually are 90 because two were deleted, number four and 27, I believe.
My apologies.
Nope. No, not necessary.
Commissioner Gottskeer?
Yes. In the history of the permit history that you would have looked at for compliance, how many director's sign offs happened during the construct, you know, construction phase? Because I do know that there were some things that we, that when we looked at the project, it got approved and then, then like the, and I, these are, at least the one area that I'm thinking was actually really was, it very much impacted the members' use of this hotel, which was the, there was a change that happened between where there, the, I think it was what was called the Raft Restaurant, which then got changed over to the women's locker room. So how many of those things happened in this compliance or how, you know, the whole project? After it got approved and then the applicant came in and did whatever they did and the community, I, some people, you know, kind of, it was just out there. How come all of these things are changed when, when the community had a sense that it was fixed at the time that it was approved?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gottskeer, I'm not sure I can tell you exactly how many because some of them were done on, you know, at a single time, but I can tell you that we compared the permit that the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors approved and the physical arrangement of space on that permit to the coastal development permit that was ultimately issued after the amendment, and your commission did review that amendment. And there were some changes between those two plans, and the most notable is the one that you just mentioned, which was moving the, I was, the Raft Restaurant and replacing it with the Coral and the locker room space. So that was definitely done at a staff level.
So that, just to be clear, that change was not authorized by, or authored by, the Coastal Commission?
I don't, Mr. Chair, I don't believe so because I don't believe the Coastal Commission actually took action on the appeal that was before them. I think they found it, that it didn't raise a substantial issue, so I do not believe that that occurred as a part of that. I think it occurred as we were trying to remedy the various requirements of the H L A C and, and other groups in this project and some realities with the project.
Okay. Commissioner Idelson?
I'm back to the conditions again. On condition 23, membership meetings, I guess that would be the consultation, what kind of data did you pick up on that? What kind of information?
Commissioner Idelson, sorry, I should have said it again, Chairman Overall, Commissioner Idelson. I, I actually sat down with representatives of the owner, and I was showing a list of agendas and minutes from 19, I mean, excuse me, from 2009 through May of 2011. They did not wish to have those sent electronically as they're of some confidential nature, and I saw a stack of them. I wrote all the dates of those minutes and agendas, and that was how I came to that information. It is not required to be submitted to permit compliance, but I requested it in response to the issue raised by Mr. Weston. Yes. And, and what I saw was that they met every month. There was a meeting for every month, an agenda and minutes.
Did you meet with Mr. Weston or any of his people on that same topic on number 23?
I did not. The reason I met with the owner's representative was they were the holders of the information. So I went to them to say, have you had these meetings? Can you provide me some proof? I requested that. Again, the condition didn't require it, but to be responsive to Mr. Weston, I wanted to find that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lance, I, go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
I want to get in front of the chairman, you sure this is okay? Substantial conformity is a, is a term that can be interpreted different ways, and it's very clear that you chose to have a very strict interpretation of these conditions, and I know that's a legitimate approach. Did your team make that determination as to substantial conformity and how you would get there, or was this done on a different level?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, are you asking how high in the department did this decision go?
Okay. Right there. Okay. Have you, have you approached substantial conformity differently in the past, ever? Do you, how do you, how do you get there? Is it a totality of the circumstances, or is it line by line?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I would say this has been the most substantial effort I can recall in, in reviewing permit conditions and ensuring compliance. I mean, we've spent a great deal of time. We had a lot of information and a lot of input, but generally, the same requirements are applied to every case, which is we essentially look at the project description that's contained within the first condition in the permit and all of the permit conditions to ensure that the project was constructed and is being operated in compliance with those conditions. So I would say although this has been a much more intensive effort, the basic principles of, of compliance are the same as other cases.
When, when a group or an individual is impacted by a coastal development permit that this commission approved, is there ever a remedy? Is there ever a process where they can come back to decision makers, not, not staff, but either this commission or the Board of Supervisors?
Mr. Chair, I think the, the only permit where authority is retained with your commission and ultimately the Board of Supervisors is in conditional use permits. Those actually can be found in, an applicant can be found in noncompliance with their permit by the Planning Commission. There's certain findings that the commission would need to make, and then you would have the ability to either revoke the permit or modify the permit. But that is a very unique circumstance to conditional use permits. What we're operating under here is a development plan.
But this had been a conditional use permit and it became, morphed into a coastal development permit, and had it stayed a C U P, the folks in the audience here would have had a hearing today.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, that's correct. The context would have been different. The reason it morphed from a conditional use permit to a development plan, I believe, is because when the coastal land use plan and zoning ordinance was adopted, the property was zoned in a way that required a development plan as opposed to a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits are really meant to permit activities that, that don't fit in any particular zone district, and that's why this extra level of care is afforded to them.
So are you saying it was rezoned?
I believe it was under the coastal plan.
And the, and the rezone went to?
Commercial visitor, it was residential in 1927 or '37, and then at some point it went from residential, which is why they needed the conditional use permit in 1937, and then it went to commercial visitor.
If I can just follow up on that. When, when did that take place? Because when I'm looking at the background history, in 1978, it indicates that that was the first C U P. And so I'm, I would like to know when the conversion was made.
Mr. Chair, I believe it occurred when the coastal land use plan was adopted for the County of Santa Barbara and the zoning ordinances, and that was in 1980, '80 or '81.
But it still continued to operate under a C U P until?
Until they modified it, yes. We didn't convert everybody's conditional use permits to conform to the new zoning until they came in.
Mr. Chair, just one last comment if I could. I, I'm just concerned that, given the amount of public scrutiny that this project resulted in, that after the fact, when people are affected and, and claim that the, the underlying assumptions are no longer valid here, that there shouldn't be a little more due process. And I would, I would think that maybe your review could have happened after hearing some testimony, not before.
Mr.
Please. Let's keep it civil.
Mr. Chair, just, and Commissioner Phillips, I don't think anybody in this room would have been very satisfied if we just came in and said, we don't know, what do you think? I mean, I think it was incumbent upon us to do our review. It is our job to do that permit compliance review. Obviously, if we hear something today that is in direct contradiction to something in our report where we believe that our finding is not correct, then we will modify that finding.
Good.
So I just want to make that clear. We're certainly open to the testimony that occurs today, but it is really a staff level determination ultimately on compliance.
Mr. Idelson?
Okay. How can we ramp this up to make it a full hearing to give the, give the public an opportunity to truly be involved in?
Ms. Black, let's, let's, let's hold that question. I mean, I think it's a very appropriate question, but let's, let's get more out on the table and see if we're actually at that point. Your question will get answered, just, I think we ought to delay it for just a little I have a number of questions I'd like to ask you. Almost all of them are definitional questions. I was not on this commission at the time the Coral Casino Biltmore project was reviewed. I did participate in the community, but I still have a number of questions. The first question actually came up in your, Ms. Lance, in your presentation. I want to know what the consequences are of, you indicated that Mr. Weston requested that we've, that you find the owner in noncompliance. And I'd like to understand, if that had been the case, what are the implications of that?
Mr. Chair, so if, if staff were to find the Coral Casino in noncompliance, we would first work with them to achieve compliance. And if we were not able to do that, for whatever reason, either they weren't cooperating or there was just some issue that we couldn't address, we would handle this through an enforcement action.
Okay. Thank you. Now to my several questions. On page two of the staff report, in conditions 15, 13, let's see, wait a minute, 15, 18, and 20, they all make reference to priority parking? And, and I'd like to know just, just exactly what is priority parking?
That's a really good question, and it's, it's hard to articulate. My understanding is that at the parking lot, lots, the attendants are given a list of the members. Therefore, they, when they drive in, they would, one, they would ask, are you a Biltmore guest, or are you a Coral Casino member, or are you from the general public? If you're from the general public, they would be booted out, as the parking lots are just for Biltmore guests and Coral Casino members. And that, perhaps the operator could answer that in more detail, how you determine, how you make it priority. Having an attendant there with a list of the Coral Casino members was the response I received. I, I understand your question, and I would think maybe the owner could respond to that.
Do you, now just a brief follow up. We'll be hearing, I think, from them. To the best of your knowledge, does priority mean that a Coral Casino member would get a parking place before a hotel guest, or are they equivalent in terms of the priority?
Chairman Overall, Commissioners, I would say before. To me, priority means you are a priority. I think priority should be given to Coral Casino members.
Do, do we in fact know that that is done, or is it just an open question at this point?
It is an open question, and again, let's, perhaps the owner could address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
On page three of your report, under item number 22B, the second item, there is a description there which gives the limit of members of the Coral Casino at 600. It gives seasonal guests at 50, and then you have the category for reciprocal, from reciprocal clubs. I am confused. I don't understand what the 50 refers to because later on, it indicates that if I'm an overnight guest at the Biltmore, I have access to the Coral Casino anyway. So what is this 50 referring to?
Chairman Overall, members of the commission, I understand your confusion. I had to do some research to figure that out myself. The 50 seasonal members is really a holdover condition from way back in 1937 and '78, when people used to come to the West Coast on a seasonal basis and stay at the Biltmore for two months, three months, four months at a time. They were afforded the same status as membership to the Coral Casino as normal Coral Casino members. So it's different than night guests who come and go to the hotel. It was really people who stay at the Biltmore for an extended length of time. Therefore, they were given the cloak of being a member of the Coral Casino, Coral Casino private club.
Ms. Black, you look like you have something you want to add.
Well, just to clarify, because this, I think we spent quite a bit of time on this. I think the seasonal members and what's referred to in, in paragraph C of that same condition differ in a, in a probably subtle but significant way. The seasonal members have full access to the Coral Casino. The regular use of the facility by registered overnight Biltmore hotel guests is to those non-member facilities. non-member facilities at the Coral Casino. So the pool, the lounge areas, et cetera. But there are private Coral Casino member spaces only, and the Biltmore guests would not be afforded use of those. It's my understanding.
And is there any requirement as to how those 50 seasonal passes or seasonal memberships are administered?
Chairman, overall, members of the commission, clearly, this is a very old condition. It really doesn't talk about that. That would be an operating management decision, how they would discern that. It, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I speak to that issue?
Certainly. Certainly.
Do you think it was a coincidence that the CUP that we inherited to review this project viewed the 50 as, that 50 number as 50 hotel members? There's a letter supporting that, that that 50 was interpreted as hotel guest, as if seasonal wasn't in there. Is that the way you saw that? No?
No. Mr. Chair, I think what we've indicated is, we don't read it that way. When you read the entire condition, seasonal members is different than just a hotel guest.
Okay. Mr. Idelson, do you have something on that point?
Not on that point. I'm back to where I was before on procedures.
Let me continue with my questions, and then we'll go there. You're next up. On page three, under item number 23, it indicates the member committee shall be consulted. And then you concluded that they, that consultation has taken place. Based on input that I heard from Mr. Weston and Mr. Rayner, I, I have to question, what, how do, how are you defining consultation?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to take this one. I think consultation is very different than agreement or approval. They, the Coral Casino operators meet with the member committee monthly. They talk about operational issues. I think that's really what's required. I don't think approval is required. And it's, it is a very difficult issue to really address beyond just, are they having meetings? Are they talking about issues? But it is clear to me from the record that it didn't require approval by the member committee.
Okay. On, let's see, on page three, number 63, you indicated that they are out of compliance, but there's an offer to bring that up to date. On page five, in paragraph two, you indicate that somewhere in the, in the process, the number of rooms was reduced to 229 to offset the planned operations of the Coral Casino. I believe that's what happened, but I don't understand at all what the, what the negotiation was about. What, what was the consideration there?
Commissioner, overall, members of the commission, it may have been traffic was the, the issue with that. I think it was a concession saying, "We'll, we'll limit, we'll have fewer Biltmore hotel guest rooms available," so that the impact of those guests to the Coral Casino would be less than what it originally had been, where I think it was 237 or 243 rooms at one time. Then it went to 237, and then it went all the way down to 229, I believe. That's, that's my best answer to that question.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Idelson?
Yeah, I want to go back to the procedural part of this. What would have to happen in order to ramp this up to be a hearing? Okay.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, so as I addressed in the beginning, this, this item is agendized as a briefing. And one of the reasons it's agendized that way is that's really the only way that we can bring it to your commission. Article two, which is the coastal zoning ordinance, which governs this project, is very clear that enforcement and investigation of projects and compliance with project conditions really is in the jurisdiction of the director and the delegates of that director. So article two is very clear on which decision-maker has jurisdiction over which process, which type of project. And, you know, it could be the board, it could be the Montecito Planning Commission, it could be the zoning administrator, which in Montecito is also with you. But in this case, for enforcement, that lies with the director.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any, at this particular point, do we have any more questions from the commission for Ms. Lance? Okay. Then I think the next step at this point is to open it to public comment. Since this is a briefing, we're not going to follow the usual procedures of an applicant or an appellant making a presentation and all that. What I am going to do, there are a number of people here, and life is short and time is fleeting, so I'm going to limit the, the presentations. I'd like to, I have a speaker slip from Mr. Rayner, representing the membership committee. And there are a number of people that he has talked into, I think there are eight of them all told, who have indicated that they'd like to cede their time to him. I will do it with Mr. Rayner. The rest of those requests, I am not going to take, because I don't recognize the people as official spokesmen of the membership committee. So if you have a speaker slip in, and you have something you want to say, we're glad to hear it. I am going to limit the time period that you have to speak. Additionally, I have speaker slips from representatives of the Coral Casino Biltmore management. And so I, I'd like to start first with Mr. Rayner, and then Mr. Monk, Mr. Midal, and Ms. Elidge. I'll let the three of you decide who wants to go next on, on, to follow Mr. Rayner, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Mr. Chair, I don't know whether, I think you just kind of maybe forgot, but if we have Mr. Rayner, we have Mr. Monk on the, which is the hotel. I do think in somewhere in the order of things that we need to reference Mr. Weston, because he's the, yeah, and you didn't mention that. And I went, whoa, this is going to be a little unwieldy here.
They have requested that Mr. Rayner go first, and Mr. Weston has requested that he be able to go near the end of the presentations or the comments. And we're going to do that. We, we, just to be clear, this is not our normal procedure. We're not going to have public comment and then have rebuttal. This is all public comment, and that's what we're going to take. So, Mr. Rayner, you're up. I'd like you to keep your comment.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, keep, and so, so if, this is unlike, is unlike other situations when we take public comment, do we, do we, are we going to be able to question what's been said? Or is there going to be a dialogue between us and whoever the speaker is? Or are we just going to take every, all this information so that, so that staff actually is, is the one that's going to do something with it? I, I don't quite understand how that's going to work.
Okay. At the, at the end of this hearing, the commission may or may not offer comments to staff. And I think we'll see how it goes.
Okay, fine.
And we will see, as the presentations go through, if there is something that's unclear, and we just can't contain ourselves, and we have to ask a question, we'll ask questions. But for the most part, I think we're here to listen and then make our comments at the end. Mr. Idelson?
Okay. But you are eliminating some of the public comment. Is that what I understood?
There are eight, I believe it's eight people who have ceded their time to Mr. Rayner in order for him to represent the membership committee.
There's actually more than that.
Well, there, there are a lot of speaker slips, but I, attached to his speaker slip, I have either seven or eight.
Okay. But let's go into the other speaker slips. Are they not going to be able to speak?
They are, everybody except those seven or eight is going to have an opportunity to speak briefly. Clear?
Okay.
Okay? You're on.
Am I on? Okay. Chairman, overall, members of the commission, my name is William Rayner. I am here today in my capacity as chair of the...
It's on, and it just has to be very close to you. Speaking, are we there?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Again, I'm here today as chair of the Coral Casino Member Committee. That is a committee that is a creation of the documents the staff referred to, namely the permit. And we are all elected by all the members of the Coral Casino. And it's in that capacity that we came to you. We thought we were coming to you with this complaint, and we ended up with the staff. We're not here to reopen previous grants concerning this property. That is not the point of this. We're here because, under the, under the guise of restoration, a laudable cause, Tai Warner used your process to transform this family-friendly beach club into a luxurious operation for the benefit of his commercial hotel. And he did this by not doing what he promised. I'd like to show you a few cards that exemplify the public nature of the club. David, if you will. Sometimes pictures speak much larger than words. That's a, I'm sorry, it's not as good as the other pictures, but that is a shot of the pool deck. It's a lovely deck. I wish that's all it was. It happens to be a hotel guest key. So when you check in, that's what you're given. The second picture I'd like to show is a Tides Access card. And unfortunately, Ms. Lance is just wrong in terms of who uses that restaurant. It's not just members, members' guests, hotel guests and their members. Those cards are freely given out, approximately 2,000, 2,500 every quarter, to members to use and give out for their friends or acquaintances, people they meet on the street to come in and use the restaurant without being in the company of a member. Use their credit card, they don't have to pay with cash. And in my own case, I once was told by a friend that he came to the front desk, did not have one of those cards, but said, "I'd like to eat." And they said, "Well, do you know any members?" And this person said, "Yes, I know Bill Rayner." And she said, "Fine, here's a card, have a nice dinner." So that is why we think it is much different than a private facility, much different from what this commission authorized. Now, I have the utmost respect for the staff. I've done five large residential projects over the past 12 years. These are good, hard-working, smart people. But in this case, the staff report is grossly inaccurate. It's non-responsive to our filing, and it's harmful to the planning process that you people have been entrusted to protect. Let me just ask, how many people here today, would you please stand if you're a member of the Coral Casino? Thank you very much. This speaks volumes. And the reason I have 15 speaker slips, Mr. Chair, is that I've asked people not to burden you with repetitive comments, and I'm not going to take the time of 15 people, I assure you. But we're trying to do this in an orderly and expeditious way. I guess, by the way, the owner's allegation in his February 17 filing was incorrect. The owner said that the member committee just happened to be nine people who were disgruntled with the club and did not reflect the views of the membership. As you can see today, that just isn't the case. Let me take a step back in time and tell you how I got into this mess. About a year ago, I went down to the Planning Development Department. I sat down with the senior planner, and I said, "I've got this problem. Can you help me?" And she said, "Of course." We went down to the basement, retrieved five boxes of history files for the Coral Casino. I went through every page of those. And when I finished, I sat down with her, and I said, "Is this document that says, is stamped 'approved plan,' is this the final say on the land use side of the permit?" She said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, it doesn't make sense to me, because where the raft is shown, there's nothing but dead space. Where the Coral Cafe is today, it was shown to be a yoga, open yoga exercise area." And indeed, and this is very, very interesting, if you look at condition 89 of the permit, you'll see a H L A C condition. H L A C now, this is not a lot the staff can deal with. And that condition points out that this open area between the clock tower and the members lounge is supposed to be kept that way. Any temporary barbecue equipment or supplies that are set up have to be put away and stored. Why? Because they were concerned with the view corridor. What does the owner do? He comes along and takes the raft, moves it into this area, and as you could see from earlier slides, a number of chairs, tables, umbrellas, there is no more view corridor. I don't think the staff has the authority to waive that. Now, I'd like to focus on the scope of the staff review. Mr. Weston's letter is referred to repeatedly in the staff report. Mr. Weston's letter was a transmittal letter, four pages of highlights, summary. We spent tens of thousands of our members' money preparing a 26-page detailed request that was attached to Mr. Weston's letter. Nowhere in the staff report, and I mean nowhere, will you find any reference to those 26 pages. And you didn't hear Ms. Lance today refer to them. I don't know why they weren't responded to. But as a lawyer, I do know that staff has a legal authority to write a responsive and complete document, or else there's no way any other reviewing authority can deal with this. But then again, they say there is no reviewing authority. They say they're going to be the first and final say in this. Then you heard many, 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 many references to those conditions. They went through and did a diligent job, thorough job, looking at the conditions. Well, there's more to this than conditions. Let me read you the first sentence in the attachment to the permit. "This appealable coastal development permit is based upon and limited to compliance with the project description, project plans on file with the county, and conditions of approval set forth below. Any deviations refer further permitting." Now, the project description and the environmental impact report, which you required, are significant documents in this case. And if you could put up the other slide, please. I'm sorry, you won't be able to see it well, but I hope you will take the time to, to read it. These are just examples of statements contained in those documents, documents upon which you voted to approve this facility. You'll see up there, if you could read small print, assurances of privacy for members, protection of historic function, and promises of less impact from hotel guests. Unfortunately, the reality is, by eliminating the fee for hotel guest use, previously, I should say, before the club closed, there was a $10 fee for members' guests and for guests of the hotel. And when the club reopened, the owner increased the members' guest fee to $25, 150% increase, and did not reimpose the former hotel guest fee. So, a family of four who wants to go to the spacious gym over at the hotel doesn't think twice about walking over to our little gym, which is about the size of a Montecito garage, and using that facility. If they had to pay $100, they would. But that, more than anything else, changed the balance to the extent there was balance previously, and tilted it upside down. Also, I want to address the staff's basis. They talk about oral communications with an unidentified representative of the owner. Let me tell you what we wanted to do. We wanted to provide you with sworn testimony. And I'll just use as one small example, that parking lot. And I'll just use as one small example, that parking lot situation where Ms. Lance tried to address the priority issue. There is no priority for Coral Casino members. I pulled into that parking lot and it's been full, and I've had to pull out and go elsewhere. But much more importantly, before I stuck my neck out and started down this unfortunate road on January 21, January 22, and February 12 of this year, my wife and I went to check the parking lot for the attendant on those weekend days. They were busy days. And it is my statement, under the penalty of perjury, there was no attendant on duty on those Saturdays and Sundays. That's the kind of testimony you would have received, not oral assurances from the owner that mean nothing and can't be substantiated.
Mr. Rayner, I don't want to interrupt you, but
I'm sorry?
The red light, your red light is on, so why don't you take about three minutes and wrap it up?
I'll try, but I, I'm sure that you wanted to hear about the consultation requirement. And I'll move to that. I'm the person to be talking about it as the Chair of the committee, and yes, those agendas and minutes that they looked at, I prepared those. But the condition says that the membership, member committee must be consulted on all substantial changes in major policies included but not limited to, and I'm only listing a few of these, dues, staffing level, conditions of membership, and membership applications. Again, under the penalty of perjury in my two and a half years on the committee, it is my statement, there has never been any consultation, indeed, no discussion about changes in staffing level, conditions of membership, or membership applications. And finally, as to the last dues increase, one of those listed items, they said they were going to consult with us, they met with us, told us what they were going to do, and said they'd get back to us to answer some of our questions. Next thing I knew, I received a notice to all members in the mail telling us what they did. That is not consultation. The staff is satisfied simply because the owner told them, "We meet monthly." But meeting does not equal meaningful communications. And meeting with whom? Notice that I believe the reference was that they, that we meet with Coral Casino, Coral Casino operator. Representatives of Four Seasons? Yes, we do. They have no authority to deal with the kinds of substantial changes that we're talking about in Condition 23. In my two and a half years on the committee, there's been only one meeting with the owner who has authority to address the policy changes listed in Condition 23, and that related to this proceeding. Now, the language of this condition must have some meaning. It doesn't say "report," it doesn't say "dictate," it doesn't say "announce." It says "meaningful consultation with the owner," i.e. some level of regular, good-faith communications. Now, in conclusion, there's an obvious winner and loser here. The winner is Ty Warner. The loser are all the members of the Coral Casino. But much, much more importantly, and you'll hear more about this from Mr. Weston, the loser is this commission, because it's your authority that's being usurped, and it is the entire community and the planning process. I urge you to take innovative action here to stop the staff from doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. David, can you turn that blinker off? Next, and I leave it to Mr. Monk, or Mr. Modell, or Ms. Elidge, who wishes to go next, if you wish to speak at all.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Richard Monk, Land Use Counsel for Ty Warner Hotels and Resorts. How much time do we have, sir?
I was, I was attempting to give Mr. Rayner 10 minutes. Let's say 10 minutes, I'll give you latitude if you have to have it.
All right, thank you. We will divide this up. I wanted to say at the outset that I think staff did exactly what they were supposed to do in reviewing this matter. They went down through the project description, and they went down through the 90 conditions of approval and isolated their review to that, because that's exactly what they're supposed to do. Beyond that would be acting in excess of the jurisdiction of this county and delving into matters that are of a private nature between the membership and between ownership. And they did find compliance, and I think that there's substantial evidence to support that. I'd like to just quickly cover this Condition 23, I don't know if it's still 23, but the consultation condition. I delivered to Veronica Lons copies of the minutes as she described to you, and she went through each of the minutes and the agendas that, which demonstrates that there's been consultation between Four Seasons representatives and Ty Warner representatives in the committee on items as minute as whether there should be a half sandwich on the menu, or the pricing of a martini, or a vodka gimlet, and things of that sort. And these meetings are held on a monthly basis, and the minutes, as Mr. Rayner says, are prepared by the committee. I'd like to talk about the hotel usage of the casino. The casino was applied for back in 1937, and in a application that was filed with the county, there was a response from the Secretary of the Planning Commission. This was all taken off your historical record in your microfiche. And it says, "Your application requests that the beach club, which is of a semi-commercial nature, be constructed in a residential zone." In an April 3, 1937, letter from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission said, "The owners of the property known as the Santa Barbara Biltmore Hotel have submitted a petition to the County Planning Commission for the issuance of a special permit to allow the construction of a beach club on their property at the corner of Olive Mill and Channel Drive. The beach club is to be used in connection with the hotel and requires a special permit." Now, neither the application for the CUP nor other letters in the county's administrative record identify the beach club as a private club. In fact, as I just said, it was to be of a semi-commercial nature, and it was to be used in connection with a hotel. And until Marriott constructed a separate swimming pool on the Biltmore grounds in the late 1970s, the Coral Casino pool and its predecessor pool were the only pools that were available to Biltmore Hotel guests. So the facility that is located on the parcel where it now exists, Coral Casino, from the inception served as an amenity of the Biltmore Hotel. There's nothing in the county's historical record until Marriott's proposal to expand the hotel by 60 rooms in the late 70s, which discusses the private nature of the casino. And that is that condition that says the casino, Coral Casino shall remain a private club. Now, the 1979 CUP conditions of approval clearly define what is meant by "private" in terms of defining the club membership and the club usage, and Veronica and Diane discussed this. And that condition clearly differentiates between membership and between usage. The CUP condition, which has been carried forward into the present conditions, clearly limits guest membership to 60 permanent members and 50 seasonal members for guests of the hotel, guests of the Biltmore. Importantly, the condition does not impose any limitation on the number of Biltmore Hotel guests using the Coral Casino. The only condition governing the use of the casino is the one that says, "Regular use of the facility shall be limited to club members, their guests, and registered hotel guests only. Outside groups may use the facility for special functions." Now, the 50 seasonal members was adequately described by staff. It was intended to accommodate hotel guests who came and stayed at the Biltmore Hotel for extended business, such as for a season. And the seasonal member was entitled to all the privileges, all of the rights and privileges of a Coral Casino member. All these facts were corroborated by former Supervisor David Jaeger before your commission back in April of 2005, where he said, and I quote, "I attempted to persuade my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors to impose a condition on the amount of use by the hotel guests on the Coral Casino. Regrettably, I was not successful. There was no limitation that was acceptable to the other members of the board and the hotel at that time. Seasonal members were just that. They were people who came to the hotel and stayed for the season and were given the privileges of the casino, which included the right to entertain, to use the facility without charges, things of that nature. I did receive a commitment from Tom Galman, who was the manager of the Coral Casino under the Marriott, that they would do what they could to discourage use of the Coral Casino by hotel guests, and a fee was imposed. That fee, I don't think, exists at the current time." Now, Marriott's voluntary limitation was never incorporated into any CUP or development plan conditions of approval, and therefore, clearly, registered hotel guests are entitled to the regular use of the Coral Casino, and there's no limitation on such use, and nor could there be any change in the conditions to do so, because that would be beyond the power of your, or jurisdiction of your committee. So the argument that the casino has always been a private social club to the exclusion of hotel guests is simply not correct.
Mr. Monk, one of the commissioners has
Mr. Chair, if I could, Mr. Monk, would you prefer that we hold questions to the end, or should we address issues as you bring them up?
I'm just about to my end, if you could hold it to that point. So that doesn't mean that it's not a private club. It is a private club. It's a private, non-equity club. Club, club membership is limited as defined in the conditions of approval. Outside groups may use the facilities for special functions, but if you don't fall within one of those identified use groups, you're not allowed to use it. For example, I represent Ty Warner Hotels and Resorts. I'm not a member. I can't go use that unless I'm a guest of a member. It's a, it's, it's a private club as differentiated from a public facility, such as Los Banios Del Mar, where you can go down and rent a locker and pay a fee and use it. At this point, I'd like to call upon Suzanne Elidge and Bill Modell, that I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may have answered my question. I, I was about to ask you whether you consider this to be a private club, and you do. Do you have a problem with a private club having, having unlimited non-members use the club, and those people's guests as well? Is there a point where you lose the private club-ness? And I'm wondering why this distinction wasn't drawn more brightly when this application came before us in 2005. It was, it was there, but it wasn't as bright. Is there an advantage, for instance, to bring an application as a private club as opposed to a hotel additional use, do you think? I don't understand where the private club ends, under your scenario. Can you address that?
Well, again, I define private in terms of the, of the usage and membership conditions of the development plan. And it's not public. The, the club is not open to the public. If you do not fall within one of those, if you do not, excuse me, the Coral Casino is not open to the public. It's open to members, guests of members, guests of the Biltmore Hotel can use the facility.
And guests of the
Guests of, guests of the hotel can use the Tides, but they can't use the facility.
Just the restaurant, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Suzanne Elidge. I've been working for Ty Warner Hotels and Resorts since 2000, and we represented the rehabilitation application throughout the entitlement process. I just want to underscore a point that Mr. Monk made, because you've got a roomful of people who have sincere concerns. And I want to compliment staff in having gone through the volume of material that was submitted, and just making a distinction that I think is very important, and it's important to the commission and what you're doing today. And that is making a distinction between grievances that obviously exist between certain members of the Coral Casino, and potential inconsistencies or non-compliance with the conditions of approval attached to the Coral Casino application. And in the first case, the grievances that the members might have with management and ownership, I don't see those, I don't see those as coming under the jurisdiction of the commission. These have been longstanding. I wanted to share with you just as a point of history. This is a report that I produced 10 years ago this month. And it was in response to letters that had been submitted to the county a couple of months before that, that were very, very similar in nature to these current concerns that have been expressed to you by Coral Casino members, questions about seasonal membership and what that meant, and so forth. There were two long letters submitted with many allegations, and my office was responsible for doing the research and putting together a report in response to those questions and allegations, and filing it with the county staff, which we did. And at the time, there was a similar conclusion, that there was nothing that the hotel operations or Coral Casino operations was doing that was out of compliance with the conditions of approval in effect at that time, all of which were carried over into the current development plan conditions of approval. So there is a history of friction. Maybe that's the nature of having a private club on a property that has public use. But again, I want to compliment staff at, I think, producing a report that distilled down from all that volume of information what really is before the county, and what the county has an obligation to consider, and separating that from what I think are grievances that, again, are sincere, but perhaps don't have a place in the county's jurisdiction. And I'm available for questions too, having represented the project for the length of time that I did.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and fellow Commissioners, Bill Modell, representing Ty Warner Hotels and Resorts. Again, I also want to applaud staff for their due diligence and review, and finding us in full compliance, except for one that slipped through our fingers. I believe it's Condition 63, that we will produce these documents to staff by the end of this year. This, I mean, we have a membership that's very passionate about their club. There's no doubt about that. And that's what makes the club so vibrant and work so well. There's issues, there's issues, the conditions of approval that have always been in place are still in place today, and staff has found us in full compliance. Members, when members became members, the hotel guests could use the club at that time. Nothing has changed since then. What has changed is that we've got a wonderful club now, probably the finest club on the West Coast. And, and there's going to be differences. There's, there's used, things have happened over this time, obviously. Hotel guests still get to use the club. But it's a, it's a wonderful facility, and sometimes there's, there might be increases, and I think that's what a lot of the people are concerned about. Sometimes there's more hotel guests there than they were, they were used to years past. But it is a wonderful facility, and they are allowed to use it. The other thing, in getting back to the Members Committee and those, those conditions, we meet regularly, once a month. By management, I, I'm there representing the owner. We review many things, from menus to pricing, to applications of new applicants, approval of new applicants by the Members Committee. There's a lot of things that we discuss at these meetings. Some of them, some of them are heated. You can tell by Mr. Rayner's passion for a lot of these things. And they get very heated in some of these meetings. Some of the, some of the requests made to us by the Members Committee, there's many things that we can do. We can work with them. There's some requests that, operationally and due to cost and other things, we simply cannot do. But there is consultation all the time with management, and there's, the main issues, if there's a serious issue that's, that I hear that's brought up at these meetings, I go directly to the owner. He hears from me. There's something that he thinks that he can do, or we can get Four Seasons and myself and the owner together to do things, those are things that we do. That's what we mean by consultation. That happens, that takes place. Again, it's not perfect. No homeowners association or Members Committee or things like that, it's not a perfect process. But we do meet, we do consult. I believe it's better for the whole membership. And I, again, I want to thank the many members that, and phone calls that I received in support of us. We literally asked them not to come today. We didn't want to turn this into something more than it really should be today. Today is accept, to accept the staff report Today is accept, to accept the staff report that we are in full compliance of the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Mr. Medel, I have a question.
Go ahead.
You, in Mr. Rayner's presentation, he made the statement that there was not a representative of the owner present at most of these meetings. And I believe I understood you to just indicate that you are the owner's representative.
That is correct. And prior to me, there were other representatives from the owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Medel, you're an operations guy, I guess, and were you involved in the decision to not permit the entrance to Tides to be used?
I'm a representative of the owner. If you recall, and I know both of you recall during the process, it was the tower doors that you're referring to.
We spent a lot of time on this.
Yes, okay. The tower door is in place. It's in place today. During the process--
It looks very nice on the street, by the way.
During the process, and as all of you know, during the process of an entitlement project and construction and all the review boards that we go through, things change. When we went to H L A C, they were very adamant about us protecting the historic fabric of the tower. And by doing so, they requested that we do not allow lighting or signage of any kind on that door. So, operationally and for safety reasons, Four Seasons elected to just make, continue to use the main entrance for the hotel guests to come in to use the Tides Restaurant. The door was specifically put there in place, so that hotel guests had a separate entrance, so that they could go upstairs to the restaurant, and so that they would not be able to walk into the main doors of the facilities. Operationally, it just doesn't work today. It's for safety reasons and for other things that happened during the review, by the review boards, it just didn't make sense. The door's there. Things should change in the very near future, and it's a cost of attending, having an attendant there full-time. Those are things that we look at, but those are discussions that we have internally. Those are discussions that we have the Members Committee. And if there's a way that we can do things without costing the whole membership, an increase in dues and other things, we will do that. They all have separate members menus. They have special members pricing. They have special members-only areas. It just comes down to, it's a very popular club now. The hotel guests do use it, but from the statistics that we've compiled, members and their members' guests are probably 55 to 60 percent users of the facilities consistently.
Thank you.
Mr. Idelson?
Yes, Mr. Medel, you're, you are then the key manager for the relationship between the members and--
I am the liaison between the owner and the Members Committee.
And you feel comfortable that you're, you're performing your job in accordance with all the policies of the hotel and the membership of the Coral?
Chairman, overall, and Mr. Idelson, what we do as an owner, as an owner representative, is that we have a five-star operator, management company, operating the facility. And there is a point that we have to allow them to manage it, to come up with budgets, cost estimates, forecasting, menus, I mean, from everything, from staffing to everything else. My role is to listen and to be at every single meeting. There's obviously times when I'm not there, and there's a lot of times when there isn't a quorum of members there. But my objections are to be there, to listen, and if I hear something that's not being done, or I feel that there's, it's not been, the management company has not been responsive, I have a direct line to Mr. Warner, and I pick up the phone and give him a call. That's happened several times over the last 14, 16 months.
Okay, let me just say this. I've been a member of this community for 25 years. I've been very active in a lot of organizations, primarily the Montecito Association Foundation. Now, I look at the group of people here today, and I know some of them, quite a few of them. These people don't come out for just anything. I've never seen a group quite in this way for an issue like this. There's got to be something broken. There just has to be. Can you help me with that?
Well, it depends on who you ask. We have many, many members that love the facilities, enjoy using them and everything else, you know? Not everybody's happy, and that's just the way it's going to be. But it doesn't mean that we cannot work together and find a common ground of how we can make things better for the, for the members. We do that. We have those, we have those discussions.
But this is very unusual. They're taking half a day or more--
Well--
--to be here, and so that's why I'm asking you the question. What's happening?
I don't know how to answer that. Again, back in the 2003 to 2005, we had a room full of supporters for this project as well. It's just a nature, and I applaud these people. I do. Again, I go back to, they have a strong passion for this club, and it's what makes the club today. We have the same thing at Montecito Country Club. It's a wonderful club, many activities, the members are engaged, and as well as this group. You know, after, after today's meeting, we're going to walk out, we're going to be friends, we're going to be having a drink together or lunch and things like that. That's, you know, as long as they invite me and pay for it, but it's just the nature, it's the nature of the community, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Now, they put together tens of thousands of dollars to pursue this. It's a pretty expensive process that they're going through. And this is just, this is just a memo, briefing is all it is.
One more, one more thing before I finish, is we were in direct dialogue with the Members Committee all of 2010. Mr. Warner had his chief financial officer and attorney fly out to meet with the Members Committee. We were making a lot of headway, and working with Four Seasons and trying to address a lot of their issues. Unfortunately, they took this step until we, at that point, we just kind of stopped, because we felt that we were not being heard completely, and we thought that they went in a different direction that we were not expecting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll be back. And I would ask that you give careful consideration, since I have 40 speaker slips, give careful consideration to just how badly you actually have to speak. We will be here for quite a while. I guess we don't have our staff quite yet. We're back in session, and we're in public comment. There are several speaker slips where people have indicated that they are willing to donate their time to somebody else. We've already taken care of that. So, if, if your intent was to give your time to somebody else and you don't wish to speak, that's fine, but I'm going to limit, we'll see how it goes, but I'm going to limit you to three minutes, and preferably shorter. And please try and keep your comments as best you can to factual things that perhaps we have not heard. First is Stephen Block. And I apologize if I butcher names. John Stiegel.
I've donated my time.
Okay. Chris Gabriel.
Those are the individuals who seated, Mr. Rayner, I think.
Sandra Tyler. Well, this'll go faster than we thought, I guess. Let's see. Chrissy Waterman. Bill Letty. Looks like Elizabeth Letty. Catherine Steele.
She donated her time.
If, if you're here and you want to say something, you can't donate your time. So, if you've got something to say, you probably ought to take advantage of it. Looks like Les Jones. That one I can't read, I'll come back to.
Good morning. I've been a member of the club since 1993. I'm a third-generation member, and I've served on the Member Committee for six years, and was chair of the Member Committee during, during the 2003, 2004 period, when this dispute was really getting quite heated. There are a number of issues here that are clearly perhaps beyond the jurisdiction of this group, but I think Mr. Medel put it very well when he said that not too many years ago, there were 100 people in this room supporting this program, and today, none of those people are here, or many of those people are here, but are here for the opposite reason, that the thing they thought they were supporting didn't happen, and that's very important. I'd like to ask everyone in this room who was here previously, who thought that they were getting something that they didn't get, to stand up. As you can see, there's been quite a shift, and hopefully, there's some significance there. People have addressed the consultation issue well. I think that inherent in all of that is a reference to historic, and we understand that what means, what consultation means, what historic means requires judgment, just as simply looking at whether there was a meeting and agenda perhaps doesn't fully encompass consultation. I think by the same token, what is historic is also something that requires the staff to make judgment, and in this case, I don't think, I don't think they have. I'll just, I'll give you two specific examples. The first relates to consultation, and it relates to probably the most central issue of what represents a private club, and that is the membership of that club. And I can speak to my own experience with respect to the fact that, once the membership was reopened, Mr. Warner's representatives took money, and Mr., they took the money, they gave access to the club, they refused to give us information that we had previously had for over, over 50 years to evaluate the membership, and essentially, these people were given full rights of membership, whether we approved them, of them or not. That's a very central issue, and it changed dramatically. The second is the absence of legacy memberships. When I joined the club, it cost $15,000. My children could join the club at that time and pay half of that fee. That category has disappeared. Probably nothing is more important in a private club than the ability to have a multi-generational element to it. It was a huge, been a huge part of this community for many years. Today, that costs $200,000 or more for each of my children if they choose to join. So, I think that there are several key issues that clearly are different, and I hope you'll consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Just quickly--
Mr. Phillips?
Yes, Mr. Phillips.
You, I asked this of you because you were in a leadership role in the club. Wasn't there, isn't there a fair expectation during this process that with a $65 million update, things would change? Prices may go up, things might be different. And did the membership protect itself enough, do you think? Is that part of the problem here?
Well, perhaps part of the problem is that the membership was too trusting. One of my, one of my challenges in that leadership position was that I tried to pin down, at this point it was a Mr. Greg Rice, to specific things, because I was very concerned, having seen what developers do. They make many broad, generous, open promises, and then typically are hard to pin down after the fact. And he was doing all of those things, and he did it very effectively, and I think frankly, bamboozled a lot of people. Many of the people in this room would probably tell you today that they were bamboozled and, by a clever, a clever marketer. And so, we tried, but sometimes you don't win, and that's why we're here today. We hope that maybe you'll help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Victoria Dolan, and I am here as a representative of Four Seasons, which is the management company that operates the Coral Casino Club. I have a unique history. I have, I began employment there in 1989, which, and we've undergone three different ownership groups that have, you know, owned the property. I have been directly responsible for meeting on a monthly basis with the Coral Casino Member Committee meeting, and chair, and committee during that entire time, up until 2001, when I had a child, and have been working more in a part-time capacity. I have a long history about what's happened at the Coral Casino. I think that, since I've been here in 1989, the debate over whether hotel guests can use the club or not, has been a continual conversation that has taken place between us as a management group and the Coral Casino members, and I think we've tried to work in good faith with the committee to come up with policies and procedures to try to make the experience for both, understanding that both have the right to use the club, that try to make that experience the best and all possible avenues. I think one of the other things that's important to note is, is that the CUP, the Development Plan, has been something that has been my responsibility as an employee, as well as a few others at our facility, who is responsible to complying with that document. It's something that I was given when I started in 1989. I have done reporting to the county. There were reports, I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that, that we've been obligated to give statistics on La Pacifica Ballroom, which is at the Coral Casino site, talking about who used that facility on a day-to-day basis, conditions of not using it between 11:00 and 5:00 on Saturdays and Sundays, the parking conditions. All of these have existed for a long period of time, and I stand here before you, letting you know that all of us that work there, in management capacity, or even the day-to-day staff, work very hard to ensure that we are complying with those conditions. And I think that, you know, staff has done a good job. I've tried to work with them to answer those questions that I can, and I stand before you and just let you know that I'm available for any questions that you might have, understanding that I have a long history. At one point, for, for a lot of years, I was the resort manager at the hotel, and so had direct responsibility for the operations of the club. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Dole.
She gave her time. She gave her time.
I'm sorry, what?
Time, it's one of the other--
Oh, okay. Arnold Bruston. Followed by John McGowan.
Good morning. My name is Arnold Bruston, and I was a member of a private club called the Coral Casino Beach and Tennis Club. And now, I'm vice chairman of the Member Committee of a place that's run by the Four Seasons Hotel. And I think there's a very important distinction between what's been represented to you as being consultation, and what even your own staff says is required. Your own staff says, on page six, that the owner should engage in meaningful, good-faith consultation with the Member Committee. And I note that in their response to their point on page six, they only say that they've been given documentation that consultation has occurred. There's a distinction between what is in the requirement of meaningful, good-faith consultation, and what the representative of your staff says is consultation. Symbols are important. Things are not just black and white. It is the shades of gray, the color spectrum, that have to be seen. Your staff in its report looks at the black and white, and does not ever attempt, ever attempt, to contact any of us to find out how the texture of the club has changed, how the private club that we joined is now just an appendage of the hotel. There are a number of examples of that. The most interesting one is the startling revelation today, that the staff approved the moving of the Raft Restaurant, which was a cafeteria. People waited in line, they ordered their ham and cheese, you know, hot tomato soup, and in the process of waiting in line with all the other members, there was a lot of chance to chat, camaraderie developed, and what the staff approved-- And what the staff approved was moving the raft and creating a restaurant. It's currently called the Coral Cafe. It could have been called McDonald's. They don't care. What's the difference between getting a salad at a cafeteria-like place and a formal restaurant adjacent to the pool? There's a lot of difference. There is a lot of difference. And you people have never asked any of us what those differences are. There are shades of gray. Everything isn't black and white. Another thing that I find absolutely mind-boggling in this report.
I want to let you know that your red light's on, so.
Okay, let me, I'm not. In the report on Page Six, and this is what makes people like me crazed with government, because sometimes employees of government turn logic upside down. In the report, they say that there should be a separate entrance for hotel guests to use the Tides Restaurant. And then they say, mind-boggling, they say, while the entrance was built, there is no requirement it be used. Well, what is wrong with you? Why is a requirement imposed, and there is no comparable requirement to use it?
Mr. Chair, if you could ask the speakers to speak to the Commission, I'd really appreciate that.
Well, I'm speaking to the report, madam, and it's not my fault.
I think your time's up, so if you've got a concluding sentence, I'd appreciate it.
I have to conclude, because as a person who's been on the Member Committee, I have been subject to the tap dance that all of you have faced for a long time. Bill Medel, who says he is the representative of the owner, comes to those meetings as a liaison, not as a decision-maker, not as anyone who can engage in meaningful, good-faith consultation, as is required. There is again, a major distinction between meaningful, good faith, and the law is laced with cases that describe what good faith is.
Mr. Bruston, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a comment about the structure of the report, so that people understand what is included on Page Five and Six and into Page Seven. So, the first, that part of the report is under Responses to Requested Actions by Mr. Weston. And those points, those nine points, are not conditions of approval. Those are the points that Mr. Weston raised. So, when the speaker indicated that he didn't understand why our response would be what it was, that wasn't a condition of approval, that was a point raised by Mr. Weston. There is no condition of approval that required the Tides entrance be built or used. It's on the plan, but it did not require that the Tides Restaurant be built or used. So, I just thought that might help the Commission and the public in reviewing this. The first part of the report, under Issue Summary, does contain the specific language of the conditions, and then the condition language is included as the first attachment. So, I just thought that might help everybody in their review. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan. Followed by Victoria Hines.
Mr. Chair, and, is this on? Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, my name is John McGowan, and I'm a member of the Coral Casino. I have been a member since the '60s. My wife, Stevie, she's a three-generation member, and we have seen that the Coral Casino changed, and as Mr. Edelson pointed out, there seems to be a disconnect, and I think there is a disconnect. You have people saying one thing on one side, and you have other people, quite a few other people, and we in fact did ask members to come down and speak today. And they seem to be diametrically opposed in some cases. Point of clarification, Bill Medel does come to our meetings on a regular basis, but he's there usually just for the, to be the eyes and the ears of Ty Warner. We do talk sometimes about new memberships, but not too much. Talking about consultation, there is very little, if any consultation that goes on, I would agree with Mr. Rayner, it doesn't exist, and it certainly doesn't exist in a good faith and meaningful way, and it never has. I've been the chair for three terms, I've been on the committees for 15 years, and I think that's one of the main problems we have. We have a very arrogant Four Seasons and a very arrogant owner, and it's hard to make any kind of progress with them. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Commission. My name is Victoria Hines, and I've been a member of the Coral Casino since the mid-'80s. I use the Coral Casino every day. I love it, it's beautiful, I swim in that pool every single day. I was on the Member Committee when John McGowan was Chair. I supported Ty Warner and the beautiful plans, and I feel totally deceived. I put my good reputation out there, I talked to a lot of my friends, fellow members of the Coral Casino, members of the community. I've lived in Montecito for over 30 years, my husband grew up here, we know a lot of people. And we were very, very supportive, and I was so disappointed when there were people who were opposing what we thought was going to be this wonderful, wonderful new club. When we reopened, oh yes, it was gorgeous. We had no raft, we had a lot of things that were promised us that weren't there, that we didn't know about until it reopened. And that makes me so disappointed, and as I say, taken advantage of my good faith. I don't know how we go forward from here. I think it's a shame that we, as the membership here, wasn't asked more about how we feel about our new club. I have seen many, many friends who are Coral Casino members, who finally realized that this was not going to be the club we used to have, they sold their memberships back to Ty Warner, who at one point was offering $15,000 or $17,000 to buy back those memberships. Now, every day, I swim like at 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, so there generally a nucleus of members who are there. If I swim later, I, yesterday afternoon, walked in at 3:00 in the afternoon, did not know one soul there. The place was overrun with hotel guests. They don't pay a fee to go in, but yet, I have to pay to bring family or friends to use the facilities, to do, you know, what have you. When we first reopened, Ty was trying to charge us members $25 to bring friends to eat at the Coral Cafe. He realized that nobody was going to do that, so he stopped that. So, it would cost me to bring four people $100 before we ordered a speck of food. So, this is showing you how this has happened. You know, I think it's so sad, because before the remodel, we saw our community, we saw children, little children, teenagers growing up. That was a private club. Yes, I know that hotel guests could come over. I think many of us would feel a little better if the hotel guests were charged like $25, like we are, and maybe that we weren't charged at all. I belong to Burnham Wood also, we're not charged to go to Burnham Wood, we're not charged to play tennis there. Yes, there's a small guest fee to play golf, understandable, every place. But so, it seems like the tide, it's just backwards. And when hotel guests come over to our club, not charged, and then they bring local friends, three, four, five, six friends, who they say, oh, these are my friends, and they're coming with me because I'm staying at the hotel, and they're not charged either. How do you think we, as members, feel when even to bring family, we're charged? Thank you so much for listening to us and for your consideration.
Next, I have Lucinda Owen. Followed by Kellum DeForest.
Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Spencer, and my children are fourth-generation Santa Barbaraans. I, my children are also third-generation Coral Casino members. I'm here to just testify a little bit about the soul and the texture and the fabric of the club, and why, and why, as Arnie said, rules do matter. My parents became members in the mid-'80s, and at that time, the membership collectively, as members do when they get together, decided that this was going to be, for a longstanding period of time, obviously, in perpetuity, going to be maintained as a family club. My parents paid $1,500 to join, they paid $30 a month in dues. Kids were littered, the pool. Teenagers in wetsuits came crawling out of the ocean, sand was everywhere, the raft was filled with laughter and games and towels and vibrant Santa Barbara soul. I think, again, as symbols matter, when we joined, there was a member directory that had the white, plugged, plastic letters of every name of the members. When the club reopened, that has been taken down. Not only has it not been replaced, we are actually, and I'm on the Membership Committee, we are not allowed to know who the members are. So, when we say that we had 40 or 50 people here, that actually took an amazing amount of legwork to actually remember who is a member, who's dropped, who hasn't, I'm sorry, I'm not a member anymore. We, we don't, we represent a committee, we don't know who the membership is. I've never belonged to a club where we don't know who the members are. When we send out mailings, we have to submit it to the Four Seasons in order for them to send out any sort of notification. So, you can imagine how embroiled that gets, and how political that gets, they have to know what we're sending out in order for it to be sent out. Again, in terms of good faith, when Kevin Spears, the manager, who's great, comes to us at these meetings and says, the supper dinner wasn't well-attended, we say, great, Kevin, it would be super if we know who the members were, so we could call and try to get a group of people down to help support your club. A lot of us who are members of the Coral Casino are actually on boards within the community, and very, very easily, one way or the other, could help the catering process of who's going to rent out La Perla or not, in order to help them augment their commercial It is a rabbit hole, sitting in those meetings. And you just heard Mr. Medel, whom I've never seen since I've been a member since February, and I'm still not indemnified by the Ty Warner Group to be on that Membership Committee, and for 10 months, we've been asking for indemnification for three members, Lucinda Owen, Judith Little, and myself. We have never been indemnified in order to sit on that committee. Mr. Medel has promised us every single meeting that he would get back to us regarding that indemnification, and it's never happened. So, to let you know, in terms of meaningful, soulful cooperation, going through the planning process, having the raft, your rules matter because it protects the soul of Santa Barbara and Montecito. It protects that soul. The tap dance, rabbit hole, it's private, it's not private, you think you're going crazy. Guests are allowed, but they're not really guests, guests of guests, they're certainly not allowed to use the private members.
You need to wrap it up.
Every single, every single private member space in that club is used by hotel guests, I will swear to that. Thank you.
The following speaker is Daphne Moore.
Kellum DeForest. My father Lockwood DeForest was the landscape architect for the project, the Coral Casino. Therefore, I can add some history. In 1936, Mr. Odell of the Biltmore, the Biltmore owner, wanted to improve his outdoor pool area with its seasonal cabanas. Obviously, that area could only be used in the summertime, and was not adding to the hotel facility. So, to make it a year-round facility, he commissioned the design for what he called the Coral Casino, with Gardner Daley as the architect. Then he had to finance this, because this was in the Depression, the Great Depression now, was still going on, so to finance it, he went to the wealthy Montecitos, who wanted beach facilities, and to get them to support, providing them with a new facility called a club, a cabana club, and as a membership club. And they, he provided the cabanas, that did not have to be taken down in the winter. This was similar to the Bel Air Beach Club in Pacific Palisades. Excuse me. I can attest that from the very beginning, there was a conflict between the club members and the hotel management. It existed from day one. So, the question is, and this, obviously, from what the, what has been said here today, there is a terrible lack of communication and input from the club members to the management, so, and that needs to be worked out. How can these issues be resolved without these, this type of public hearing and the ensuing public expense? Then just quickly, about the separate entrance issue, Gardner Daley envisioned his entrance, as the main, now called the main entrance, to provide a wow design feature. So, you went, enter the thing and see the pool and the ocean, it's a real architectural design feature. It would be a shame not to allow hotel guests the experience of this unique view. Thank you.
Thank you. Daphne, please, Daphne Moore?
I'm donating my time to Kim Seefeld.
You can't donate your time, she's not an official here, so if you want to say something, you need to do it. She's going to be limited, just like everybody else.
Oh, I'd like, can I just switch slots with Ms. Seefeld?
That you can do. Actually, she's the next speaker.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak now. I'm scheduled to go out of town. My name is Kim Seefeld. My husband, Kip, and I are long-term members of the Coral Casino. Four generations of our family have enjoyed the Coral Casino. In another life, I've been a trial lawyer, I'm not a specialist in land use, I did business litigation. I have a document that we'd like to ask be submitted and put on the overhead.
And here's a copy for each Commissioner. It's just a little, so if I just move it and say what you're going to say.
I'm sorry. We made a little summary, and I'd like to note, there's some confusion about the permit numbers, there's so many of them. We accept that it's the latest one. There's also a paragraph reference to Condition 24, which was changed in the later permit. Otherwise, it's very consistent with the last permit. Many of us, if you've heard today, supported Mr. Warner, including my family. We feel utterly deceived that he completely misrepresented what he was doing. And the real issue here today is he didn't build, nor is he operating in conformity with the coastal development permit. He didn't move the raft, he eliminated the raft. Non-registered invitees, huge numbers of them, used the Coral. Non-registered invitees, huge numbers of them, use the Coral Casino. The other day, we were at the pool, two registered guests, 10 to 15 teenagers, local teenagers, walked into the Coral Casino by using their name. This is the gravamen of what has happened here, is we no longer have a private club. We have to pay fees. Hotel guests, no fees. Guests of hotel guests, no fees. Huge numbers of the public use this club. Mr. Warner was turned down on a hotel expansion at the Arco Center, at the spa. So he has used our private club to accomplish his goal of a major Biltmore expansion. And that's wrong. It makes a travesty of this planning process. It makes a travesty of our community. The totality of his violations, and you can go through on page two and three, I listed just off the top of my head, 20. The totality of those violations is you've eliminated a private club. Words have meaning. Doors, open and close, are used. Private, non-public. Consultation, give and take, not sitting in a room, listening to somebody and issuing edicts. The Coral Casino is supposed to be run in conjunction with, it is a condition of the permit, the hotel, not as a sideline.
Ms. Seefeld, you're... Thank you. Now, I think it was Daphne Moore. Do I have who wanted to follow? Or if you don't, that's fine, too. I just want to make sure I'm on track here.
Thank you very much. My name is Daphne Moore, and I'll make it short and simple. I've been a member of that club with my parents since about 1940. So I've seen the way it was, really, basically, up until Mr. Warner bought it. And it's no, it is no longer a private club. And I think, speaking to two people who talked before, there are rules for a reason, and words have meanings. And to me, I began to smell a rat when all this first came up for what was going to happen when Mr. Warner bought it, when we had a very good vote between A, B, and C. And B, I think, was, I forget what it was, to tell you the truth, but it won. And the organization, or Warner's organization, manipulated that around to mean, "Well, if you put the two together, they really won, not B, not the one that really won." And that's real Alice in Wonderland, down-the-rabbit-hole stuff. And as I can see it, it's been that way ever since. My personal sadness is no more raft, taken away from us without any consideration. It's really made it a club, as someone else pointed out, because it's where we could all be together happily and informally. And that beautiful part that used to be all green grass, you try and go out there on a night when there's nothing happening, there's no big event, the doors are locked and you can't go out. Now, that's just wrong, and that's, to me, the most beautiful part of that whole club. So I just think it's a big mess, and I hope, hope, hope you can help us, because there's something really wrong about this. Thank you.
Charles Mons. And, let's see, Cheryl Tumchin.
Hi, my name is Chuck Mons. I've been a member since about early eighties. I sent a letter in a few days ago. I don't know if any of you have seen that letter. A few people are shaking their head, yes. I don't really need to say much more than that. Obviously, Mr. Warner managed to convince a lot of people that he was going to proceed in the way he represented. I was not one of the people that were convinced that way and opposed Mr. Warner when he tried to, when he did the development. It's astounding that the raft just disappeared, and we don't have it. I hope that you'll take our concerns very seriously.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. My name is Cheryl Tumchin, and I'll be reading a letter for Lenny Fay LeBlanc. Dear Montecito Planning Commissioners, as a longtime Montecito resident and Coral Casino member for 33 years, I am extremely interested in the concerns that our member committee has raised in its request for a hearing. Support the committee completely and apologize that I am unable to attend today's hearing in person. For so many years, the Coral Casino has been a wonderful part of our community, providing a beautiful, Montecito-oriented, private location at which we could swim, visit other club members, and entertain our friends and guests. What has always made it special is that it's a private club and not just a restaurant or hotel. But since the renovation, which was supposed to restore the Coral Casino to what it was in the past, all that has changed. It really is just becoming another hotel facility that caters to the general public. To be honest, I am shocked at the flagrant disregard for the standards and rules that we all thought the Montecito Planning Commission imposed on the owner. On two different occasions, recent occasions, I have been invited to lunch at the Coral Cafe by friends, who are neither members or hotel guests. I naturally assumed that when the bill for our lunch arrived, I, as the only member, would be expected to treat them. But on both occasions, the hostess just brought them the bill and they paid. It made no difference that I was the only member and that they were not. The Coral Casino is just becoming a public restaurant. We members are all charged a monthly minimum food and beverage charge, but I feel I'm getting nothing for that charge. Since anyone in the public can use the restaurant, what are we paying for? We are paying for a privilege, a privilege that they get for free. I do not understand why the county does not do something about this wrong. On my last lunch at the Coral Cafe, when I had been invited to my own club by a member of the public, I asked the hostess, "Don't you ask if people attending for lunch or paying are members?" She said, "Oh, no, we never do that." Every month in our bill, Ty Warner encloses six to 12 coupons for the Tides Restaurant. We are encouraged to hand them to anyone we wish so that they can attend without our being present, regardless of whether they are hotel guests. To tell you the truth, I just throw them away, because anyone can attend Tides. It makes no difference if they have a coupon or not. I hope you will do something to enforce the rules we all thought were imposed when the recent renovation was approved. If you do not do so, the Coral Casino that we have all enjoyed for decades and that is an institution in Montecito will be lost. Lenny Fay LeBlanc.
Thank you. Let's dispense with applause, and we know where your sentiments lie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members and audience. Can everyone hear me? I was going to give a little talk, but I think I'll just have to read this in the interest of time. I'm retired physician of Santa Barbara, from 30 years with the Sanson Clinic. I've been a 30-plus-year member of the Coral Casino, a 14-year member of the member committee, five terms, five-year chairman of the committee, two years as vice chair of the committee. I was on the committee when Mr. Warner bought the property, so I've been involved in this from day one and can add great insight. What you've heard from the committee members, the members who have spoken, is essentially true. Ty Warner made many representations to the membership in order to get these renovations. Many representations and promises were made to the membership to get these renovations. However, first, they had to abrogate a contract that we signed when we joined, which said we were lifetime members. Then they put us through this divisive election process regarding Plan A, B, or C. The member committee, of which I was a member at the time, selected Plan B. Plan B was selected because we thought it was the greatest good for the greatest number. That's how we got to B. Mr. Warner agreed with Plan B. He submitted the proposals for Plan B to you, obtained the necessary permits, closed the club, and surreptitiously, in my opinion, built Plan A, the plan he initially wanted but was rejected by the membership and the member committee, the duly-elected representatives of the membership. His reason for doing this, the renovations, was to protect the membership, the private club, as he called it, to prevent impact of hotel guests going to the hotel, the restaurant, and then filtering into the club. So it's to our protection. It was to isolate the hotel guests from the club. What has actually happened is he's excluded members from several areas to which they've always had access, and essentially converted the private club to hotel annex. In the process, he has indeed destroyed the heart and soul of the club, especially by removing the raft and the members lounge, where the bar will be, the two main social He now maintains, through a letter from his attorney, that the Coral Casino has never been a private club. And that's the distinction which you have to answer. Is it or isn't it? At first, he said it was, and now he says it isn't. Excuse me. The last 70 years have been, have the last 70 years been merely a fantasy, or was it indeed for all intents and purposes a private club? My fellow committee members and I say yes, what say you? We do have very limited consultation. I've been on this committee for many, many years. It is so poor that we learned years ago that we brought something up, the answer was, "We'll get back to you," and it never got back to us. We resolve that by just making sure it was on the agenda every month. That persists. We used to have the general manager of the hotel come to the meetings. No more. So anyway, it was designed to protect us, and it's done the opposite. We've always had a separate entrance for the members. Those of you who've been a member for a long time know that you couldn't get in that front door, it was blocked, and you had to be buzzed through. Triangulation, I spoke with Mr. Warner myself when I was chair, and I said, "I do not want triangulation occurring." If we come to you with a problem, you tell us this, Four Seasons. If we go to the Four Seasons, they tell us you. Well, you just heard him say, "We can't control management." Mr. Odell is a recent addition to these meetings, but he's there primarily for membership The bottom line is this: This egregious failure to build Plan A is submitted for your approval should not be allowed to stand. It will serve only to make a mockery of the entire approval process, in my humble opinion. These issues and others you've heard today should be corrected. The rule of law must and should apply to everyone, regardless of resources. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Saw somebody up and moving. Billy Mons.
I wondered if I could have the photo of the Coral Cafe, the second photo slide that he showed.
Hi, good morning. My thanks to the staff for their work and to the commissioners for all of your time.
You want to identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Billy Mons, M-A-U-N-Z. I've been a member of the club for about 25 years and the community for 40. As I was reading carefully, again, the development plan, attachment A, I got to the part of conditions for the Historic Landmarks Commission, number 89 specifically. Now, number 89 refers to this area where the Coral Cafe is. And we were promised, as part of the historic renovation, that this area with the views, corridor, those were the terms that they used, not a term I would normally use, this view corridor would be maintained. And the Landmarks Commission in number 89 said, and it's part of the plan, "All club equipment, portable barbecue setup equipment, and other portable items," and I would assume that would be tables, chairs, umbrellas, "shall be stored in designated storage areas away from the space between the clock tower on the left and the members lounge, which is on the right, as shown on the December 2004 plans." Now, it's quite obvious that, I don't know if the staff interprets this differently than I do, but you can see that the view corridor is not there and that these tables, chairs, umbrellas are there 24 hours a day. So I think the staff earlier said that they'd be willing to look at issues that were new, that were brought to their attention. So I would say today that while we sometimes may make fun of the Historic Landmarks Commission, this was an important key element and part of the conditions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Chairman, over all the members of the commission, my name is Stephen Beck. My family's been a member of the Coral Casino for over 30 years. As has been noted, the owner is required to consult with the member committee on major policy issues. On this point, the staff simply says they, quote, "receive documents provided by the owner which demonstrate compliance," unquote. This is woefully inadequate and provides no foundation for a judgment by the commission. The member committee can provide any number of instances in which they have been completely ignored or the outcomes demonstrate that true consultation within the usual definition of the word has occurred. Ms. Lansen has stated the requirement, has misstated the requirement of the CDP. The requirement is to consult, not just to meet, as she stated. And I'm very concerned that she spoke only to the owner's representatives and not to the member committee to find compliance on this point. Webster defines consult as to, quote, "ask for advice or for an opinion, or to deliberate According to legal advice I've received, this means that the outcome of consultation should be reasonable. If the outcome is not reasonable, then consultation has not taken place. I believe the key issue before the commission today is to determine if there has been actual consultation between the owner and the club. Is it reasonable that Ty Warner has doubled dues for members who have refused to sign away their legal rights while those who do not maintain their current dues level, creating a two-tiered dues structure? Is it reasonable that Ty Warner or his agents have threatened to expel members who disagree with his policies? Is it reasonable that members have to make a reservation to step on the club's lawn? What's next? Will there be a requirement to make a reservation to dive into the pool? Is it reasonable that without consultation, the club is overwhelmed with patrons of the Biltmore Hotel? I'd like to ask, how many of you here today at this public hearing, who are not in the employ of Ty Warner, believe that consultation with members has occurred or that the outcomes are reasonable? If you would raise your hand? Anyone? Apparently, the community standard of what constitutes consultation has not been met, nor do I think a different result would be produced by asking the question of any other group. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I believe it has been demonstrated by the speakers before you today that meaningful consultation under the provisions of the coastal development permit has not occurred. Therefore, in my opinion at least, if you are to be true to the spirit and to the letter of the county's requirements, you have no choice but to find that Ty Warner is not in compliance with the coastal development permit. Finally, I would simply note that, as something of a student of government, I find it very disconcerting that there is apparently no appeal, or that the staff believes that there is no appeal of the decision of the staff itself, that elected officials and the commission itself are not able to weigh in on the appropriateness... itself are not able to weigh in on the appropriateness of the final outcome here. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
I would point out that we've had a couple of hours of your input, so whether or not there's an actual appeal, I think, remains to be seen, and whether it's necessary, but you are being heard here this morning, and I know that staff has been taking notes, and we've been taking notes. So, let's see, my next last speaker is Tomaso Falzone.
He has to leave.
All right. That leads us to Mr. Weston, who requested to be the final public speaker. Mr. Weston, let's shoot for 10 minutes.
Yes, I believe I can do that. My name is Derek Weston, and I represent the member committee of the Coral Casino. I want to use my time this morning not to repeat the details of our, what I think was a very lengthy submission to you in our request for hearing, but to put this hearing before you in a larger context, and to address your role as members of the Montecito Planning Commission. I have the highest respect for staff. They have been extraordinarily gracious, courteous, and responsive. I think they've done an excellent job at trying to fulfill their duties. So I don't disagree with staff, I disagree with their conclusions, and I respect Diane Black saying, "We are here to gather evidence, we need to make a presentation, and then we're going to listen," and I'm sure that they are. However, the staff report as it currently exists, we believe, is 100% wrong, and we urge them to reconsider their conclusions. The truth is, we think it is worse than wrong, because the conclusions it lead to would not only violate the spirit and intent of the review process, but we think ultimately lead to a fundamental undermining of the integrity of the land use process in Santa Barbara. For over 70 years, I guess 85 years now, the Coral Casino has been a private, social, swim, and tennis club. There have always been some hotel guests, but they have never dominated the use of the club so as to fundamentally alter its character. As a matter of fact, every time the owners were applying for something, they very, very carefully regulated it so that the guest use was kept down. When Ty Warner's organization bought the property, it proposed significant changes, but even Ty Warner did not propose that it become a fully public club with unlimited guest use. I have gone back and read the EIR, I have read the project description, I've read everything that was filed, there is not one word in those documents that I have seen that talks about transforming the character of the club and increasing hotel guest use. On the contrary, the goal was to restore the club, to increase member benefits, and to reduce conflicts between guests and members. Everything that you heard, you, the planning commission, heard during this entire process, the language of the EIR is focused on those goals. The EIR states, "There will be no change to the operation of the Coral Casino," excuse me. In reality, everything has changed. It is run for the benefit of hotel guests, all of the private social atmosphere is being destroyed by calculated actions. The notion that the member committee is not allowed to know the names of the members is absurd, just absurd. The notion that they cannot have a directory because there are legal problems is ridiculous. Every club has a directory. I think that if this, that if corrective action is not taken, there is no question that in 10 or 15 years, the club will only be a hotel facility, and any remaining vestige of a social club will have been lost, excuse me. Now, when a permit compliance complaint is filed, as we have, it is absolutely correct that it goes to staff. Article 2 is explicit, the decision goes to the director. The question before you ultimately, maybe not at this hearing, but soon, is who has the ultimate authority? And we believe the ultimate authority is in the planning commission and the board of supervisors. The owner's application for approval was presented to you, not to staff. The many public hearings were conducted by you, not by staff. The public testimony was heard by you, not by staff. The decision about what is appropriate for Montecito was yours, not staff's. Staff did not have the authority to grant the approvals that this commission granted. Only you had that authority. Matter of fact, Condition 19 still gives you authority. If there's any conflict over parking, it goes straight to you to resolve. The member committee request for hearing, we believe, shows that the conditions have not been complied with. We believe that if staff analysis is not modified, and if it remains as it currently is in the draft report, that it is simply incorrect, and that it is simply not logical that the planning commissioners should not be the ones to finally decide. But that is not just common sense and logic, it is the law. If you look at Article 2, it explicitly states in black and white that any decision by the director, any decision by the director, is appealable to the planning commission, and ultimately to the board, unless it is explicitly made non-appealable, and this isn't. And that is as it should be. Only you and the board of supervisors have the ultimate authority on what you and the board meant when this approval was granted. If staff advises you that there is no appeal, it is ultimately arrogating to itself a decision that we think by law and by logic and common sense is delegated to you. Now, there may be good reasons that staff has on why this should not be subject to appeal, but that's not what the ordinance says, and if it should be changed, then that should be taken up by the board of supervisors. So let me explain very briefly, just in an overview, why we believe that staff's conclusion is incorrect. As Bill Rayner said, the first condition states that the approval is based upon and limited to compliance with the project description, the hearing Exhibit F, to the staff report, and to the conditions of approval, and to the conditions of approval. Any deviation from the project description, exhibit, or conditions must be reviewed, and it goes on to talk about if there's a significant change, there must be environmental review. We submitted really a 30-page filing. Staff's analysis is really just two pages long. Nowhere does it mention the project description, nowhere does it even allude to the environmental review, nowhere does it refer to the project attachments, one of which is the map, which is identical to Plan B, that shows the raft restaurant, that shows that area now on the screen as being open as an exercise area. So I apologize for the strong language, and it is not personal. We believe that the approach reflected in the staff report is a myopic view of the conditions, construing them in a literal, strict, constructionist manner, so much so that they lose their true meaning and context. And that is just plain not common sense. So we are, it is essential that conditions be read in a common sense way in context. We are not, we are not asking that the hearing be reopened, or that you change what was approved, but we are asking that the substance and intent, the fair meaning of what was conditioned be actually enforced. I won't talk about the entrance, because I think that's really clear. I think you spent days on that issue, and there is a condition, contrary to the staff report, there is a condition that the door be there, and it leads right into this grand entrance and right up the stairs to the restaurant, and it is locked and not used. It just defies common sense. It doesn't meet what we sometimes call a straight face test. Can you actually make the argument without cracking a smile? It's just absurd. But it is true, a literal, strict, constructionist reading of a condition says, you just have to have the door. You cannot only do that, there has to be some common sense. The same is true for the member consultation. They are told on good days what management is going to do, there is no meaningful, good-faith negotiation. But I have to emphasize that these are detailed conditions. The most important condition, the one that is at the heart of all of this, the one that almost all of the testimony you have heard today has been focused on, is the requirement that it remain, not that it become, that it remain a private club, that the only uses be those of a social, swim, and tennis club. If you read my letter, you may not have noticed this, Ty Warner actually changed the rules to state that the primary purpose of the Coral Casino is to serve hotel guests. He changed the definition, there was no consultation, I guarantee you, before that change was made. So the most critical issue in our report is the requirement that this remain a private, social, swim, and tennis club. And Mr. Monk, my friend and colleague, says, "Well, that's a brand-new condition." It is a condition. It was a CUP, I guarantee you, I guarantee you, that when it's converted from being a CUP, where you really unquestionably had discretion, to a CDP, there was no discussion that this effectuated a change. Nobody said, "We're going to now make this a CDP, but we're going to have to tighten up these conditions, because you're losing discretion." That issue was never flagged. Now, so that brings us to your role. If an issue is raised, and staff's conclusion is wrong, you, not staff, ultimately have to set it right. I have watched this process carefully, I don't know for sure what your ultimate conclusion will be, I know you will listen to evidence, your minds may change. If Ty Warner had been forthright about what he was going to do, this never, ever would have been approved. None of the members that are here today would have supported it, it would have been overwhelmingly opposed, and you, I believe, would not have approved it. If I am correct, then what is your role? Staff takes a position that is its call alone, staff's decision, and they've presented a report to you, they've calmed it and allowed public comment, but do you have no meaningful role, no voice in this process? Is this just a charade? Is your role merely to meekly listen to the testimony and then delegate to staff? I don't think so, and I don't think that's what Article 2 says, because time is short, I'm not going to put it on, but I will tell you, it's about page 347 of Article 2, it is explicit that this ultimately comes to the decision-makers. So what is our request for you today? We have three requests. First, you have been asked to receive and accept the staff report. We ask that you receive it, but not accept it, or sure as day it's going to be reported that the commission heard the report and accepted it, and I don't think in its current form it is acceptable. Second, we ask that you advise staff that if the issues were presented to you, if they were presented to you, and they are not today, you would at least have grave concerns and questions, and want to hear additional evidence. And last, the third thing, we ask that you advise staff that if you believe the issues raised about the Montecito Planning Commission's intent, I'm sorry, we ask that you advise them that you believe that the decisions about what you intended ultimately are decision-maker decisions, not staff. Now, I know, because I know each of you, and I've worked for, gee, some 35 years with various county staff, that you have enormous respect and deference for staff and their recommendations, and that is as it should be. I don't question their motivations for one second. I know they are acting in good faith, they have been extremely cooperative with us, but none of us is infallible, none of us. If staff gets it wrong, and I think they have so far, the decision has to be corrected. So what is at stake here? It is not merely the interests of hundreds of members of the Montecito community, that's a lot, but that's not all. It is not only the preservation of an institution in Montecito that has been here for over 85 years, I think, although that also is crucial. What I think is really at stake is the integrity of the land use process in this county. I'm a land use attorney, and I have represented innumerable developers over the decades. I know as well as anyone, and I think better than most, I have about one minute, Chairman, so I think I know as well as anyone, better than most, how incredibly arduous it is to get a project approved, and that is as it should be. But if we go through that arduous process, and then don't put teeth behind the process, look at decisions and enforcement in the context of everything that was gone through to get to that result, then the planning process becomes meaningless. We have to stand up for what is right, we have to stick to our principles, we have to hold applicants to their word, and ensure the integrity of the planning process. So you've been very patient, you've listened to a lot of people, we thank you for your courtesy and attention, and I want to thank staff for their cooperation and assistance.
We apparently have a question for you from Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Weston, the owner admits that it's a private club. He admits that. And it's a question of degree that you propose, I believe, and how do we measure that? Would all your membership be satisfied with enhanced consultation? Would they all be satisfied with a diminution of member, of hotel use? Wouldn't you still have disagreement? And how can the staff get there and measure this? Is it a totality of the circumstances, review perhaps? How do you propose we do that, since private club is not an issue, in fact, from what I hear?
Well, it's a fabulous question, and it's a good complicated question. So you are seizing on a complicated, and I think interesting, problem. As a lawyer, and I know you're an attorney, as a lawyer, we are used to dealing with gray areas. You can have something that's black, and then it gets a little less black, and a little less black, at some point, you're not sure. At some point, it's just plain white, and you have to be able to draw a distinction. With all respect, what I think has happened in this case so far in the staff report is that they have taken just a simplistic, it's white, approach. So as I said in our letter, it is a clear requirement, not just that it be a private club, but that it be a private, social club, and it is explicit that the uses be those normally associated with a social, swim, and tennis club. That's what's in your condition. It would be great if that were fleshed out, it would be great if there were pages and pages of conditions that clarified exactly what was meant. As we said in our report, it is not, for the most part, it is not any one thing that has occurred that has destroyed the compliance with that condition, it is a collection of them. There are more than one solution to this problem. Unfortunately, we can't just say, "Change one tiny thing, have a parking attendant, and everything will be fixed." If you look carefully at the, I believe, nine or 10 things that we asked for at the end of the member committee request for hearing, what we ask for is that they sit down and work out, or work out with help from staff or a mediator, meaningful solutions to move back closer to where it should be, because we have gone way past the gray area into white, and at some point, you have to just draw the line and say, "It is no longer in compliance." Where exactly it ceases to be in compliance? No one can say for sure, but I don't think there's any doubt that it's not in compliance. And we can't shy away from that problem, the one that you, I think, very correctly pin on, by saying, "There is no solution," because you run up against the straight face test. It just is ludicrous, because I guarantee you, the dues have gone from, what, 15?
Mr. Weston, I want to cut you off.
That's fine.
We're obviously not going to be able to
I'm sorry.
...resolve all that today, and while we still have a little juice left in the tank, I'd like to bring this back to the commission and see where we go with it.
May I add one sentence?
Sure.
And then I will stop. We would love to sit down with management and have meaningful negotiations. We believe we were stonewalled, that's why we're here. If we can get their attention, we will do everything in our power to work out a sensible compromise so that you won't have to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to officially close public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission to get comments, thoughts, up to and including none, to share with staff, and we'll go from there. Commissioner Idelson.
Okay, as I look at this and listen to it, and then realize the limitations of our commission, I say, on a personal level, I would like to see some type of a resolution. I would really like to see, whether it's mediated or whatever it is, and I think that's really what the members are asking for, some reasonable resolution of a series of problems. They may not fall under planning commission or even under staff's jurisdiction, this may be completely out of our realm, but as citizens of the community, I would be strongly in favor of some type of mediation if the Warner Group can support that, and for the members so that things can be improved.
Other, any other comments? Michael?
Joe Finkin here.
Okay.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to direct something to County Council, may I? Mr. Weston raises that in Article 2, the authority for this commission to review this issue is clearly with us. Can you speak to that, please?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I did look at that very issue in preparation for the hearing today, and, sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I did look at that very issue in preparation for the hearing today, and I looked at the enforcement provisions, and it's actually Article Two, Section thirty-five, one eighty-five. And it says that the director, or any person within the Department of Planning and Development authorized by the director, is hereby authorized to investigate all reported and apparent violations of any of the provisions of this article. So I did look to that section to see who had the jurisdiction over the investigation and concluded, based on that language, that it was the director.
The Planning Commission never investigates on their own, so certainly that wouldn't be us, would it?
That's correct.
But we do hold hearings, don't we? So that isn't even addressed there, is it?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, yes, of course, your commission holds hearings, and that's under circumstances also provided in Article Two when a hearing is called for on a permit decision where your commission is the decision-maker as designated.
So indeed, a hearing might be called for here.
Oh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I'm sorry, that's actually not what I meant. There are circumstances where a commission can hold a hearing on a permit when a permit decision is being made initially. But here, there is no permit decision before you, and there's no permit changes being sought by the applicant. And that would be the only circumstance where it would come back to your commission.
But is it not true that the director, as that says, that the director has some charge here in all of this? That the director, but so that the director could actually have a hearing that was conducted by us on his behalf?
You know, it strikes
It's like I'm struggling with, like, where does, you know, like, where, you know? I mean, to say that, okay, this all ends with this hearing, and
This briefing.
And it's only the director, it's only the director that can even, is in charge of creating the hearing? Doesn't that allow us? Is the compliance, is the compliance, is staff's answer to all of this directed to the director? Or is it only the staff's job to do this?
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
I want to take County Council off the hook for just a moment. We're not, we're clearly not at that point yet. There's no appeal. We haven't, I mean, there's no request, other than Mr. Weston's original request, to which we responded, we'd like a briefing. So I think to jump to those, to that level of what if, I think there's a lot that can happen between now and facing that possibility.
Well, that would, if there are options for the people who have brought this forward, Mr. Weston and group, then let's let them know what their options are. Because what we've said is that the option is the compliance report. So I don't quite get what you're, what the options are, fine. That's what I'm asking. What are the options for this group of citizens to address the county? What are the options?
It seems to, and you flesh this out, but it seems to me, a first step is to respond to the briefing that we've just gotten. And not that we're in a position necessarily to give direction to staff as to what ought to happen, but we can give a response and comments to what we've heard. And if we were to follow Mr. Weston's suggestion, that we've received the briefing, we don't accept it, and we indicate reasons why we find it not complete enough, we then give staff an opportunity to go back and work at getting additional information and perhaps resolving it without our intervention. And it seems to me, I mean, I've just stolen my thunder, but that is, that's actually where I find myself. I'm very grateful that we've, because the Coral Casino and the Biltmore are institutions in our community. I'm really glad that we've had an opportunity to hear all this. And I would say, I have received the report, and I've received the public input. I don't find this to be conclusive and acceptable as written, and I think there's more work to do, and I can go into specifics, but that's, you know, that's where I am, so.
Mr. Chair, that would be an acceptable outcome for me.
Mr. Phillips?
There's so many issues that we will never and should not be involved in. There's private issues between the membership and the ownership. And that's been going on a long time, but I'm concerned that, that you can apply for a coastal development permit under the auspices of a private club where SEAC was involved with a different review, and in fact, a different sense of necessity, should it morph into something else like an extension of a hotel in a residential community? So, and to get that, to know that happened, we need, we need evidence somehow. We need to find that this amorphous line of private-public, private club has morphed into something else. I don't care who does it. Board of Supervisors could do it, or we could do it, but it just seems wrong for staff unilaterally to make that decision. I think the county could well have an interest and an outcome. I'm not saying that you didn't do a professional job. I know you guys are as good as I've ever heard of. But there ought to be more here in this situation, because this is too easy to do. And if it doesn't pass the test of the owner intending to keep it private, no matter what he says or they say, then we have, then we have a flawed permit, and they're operating improperly. So I, I think I can go with you, and we can, I can not accept the report, but I'm not clear what happens then. But, and maybe you can say that again for me, because I'm tired, I guess.
Let me take just one person stab at it. I have a business background, and I've looked at deals, and sometimes you can pick them apart, and you can look at any one specific thing, and it, somehow, you can build an argument for it. But when you take the totality, it doesn't smell right. And I have to say, if the folks who have spoken to us here this morning, the members who have spoken to us here this morning, properly reflect what's really going on at the Coral Casino, I would say that it doesn't pass the smell test in relationship to what was intended when this went through the planning process. And I mean, I'm not going to take the time to go into all of them, but as an example, unless there are extenuating privacy concerns, it seems absolutely wrong to me that there isn't, the membership list isn't made available. And, you know, there may be reasons, but it seems like it should be. Now, somebody indicated that maybe it has been, but clearly, recently, but clearly it hasn't been over the majority of this operating time. The coupon that is being handed out that lets anybody go into the Tides Restaurant, that, I mean, that on the face of it tells me they're out of compliance, and their intent is wrong. Now, it may be the marketing department got disconnected from ownership or whatever, but I don't, the reasons are not, that would justify it, still don't make it acceptable. I think the lack of definition about what priority means in terms of parking, you know, somebody needs to provide definition to that. We've had representations that purport to be factual. Now we come to the role, the traditional role of this commission. It's not just facts, it's also interpretation, and somewhere there needs to be an interpretation that's agreed upon. Now, maybe Planning and Development can do that, maybe they can't, but it was our condition. So it seems at some point, we have to arrive at a definition that is operative for everybody. So I would say that's another one. I certainly don't think we can dismiss the concept of a public club. I don't know, I don't have a full grasp of the benefits of membership the way they used to be versus what a hotel guest gets now. But I think an examination, at some level, you have to say, are they getting their money's worth? Or has the management so blurred the lines? And when they're, they're charging members, and they're not charging members of the public or the hotel guests, that feels skewed to me. It may be okay, but it doesn't, as I said, it doesn't pass the smell test. Certainly the whole business of consultation. If the representations are at all accurate, I mean, you don't not get back to people. A genuine consultation is you respond to them. If they're not responding, that seems to me like it violates the condition. And we could probably go on, I don't want to rehash the morning, but, oh, yeah. In relationship to the door, and clearly that's a hot button for people here, I thought the explanation of why it's not used, being attributed to the historic landmarks, I understand that. However, if it's a matter of safety, and it clearly was a part of the deliberation to put in a separate entrance, then somebody needs to push it, whether it's the owner or the membership, or both, or county, and go back to H L A C and say, we got to figure out a way to make lighting available so this entrance can be used to carry out the intent of the permit that was granted. To just say, H L A C said it, and we can't do anything about it, seems to me not to be an acceptable or logical conclusion to arrive at. So, at any rate, I've given you enough of my thoughts, and again, I'll turn it back to my commissioners if anything else you want to add. Mr. Idelson?
Well, I've been thinking a lot about all the testimony I've heard today and in the briefing memo, and I'm just sitting here thinking about, I'll be going home this evening and reliving part of this again, thinking about it. And I'm going to feel, feel like I shirked my responsibility. I'm really not going to feel good about it at all. I think that we need to find a way to hold a legitimate hearing on this issue some way. I don't think we've done a very good job at all. I'm glad that they got to present their information, but we need to be in a position to make a decision, and we're not.
If I might respond to that, I think the folks at the county who are in charge of permit compliance have heard us, and I think there's, for want of a better description, round two. And if that of staff is not able to make progress with, if they totally disagree with us, then I'm in your camp. But if they've heard what has been said and what we've said, then I think there is an opportunity for them to work with the Ty Warner folks and see if we can't make progress there that, in some measure, meets some of the concerns of the membership. I think there are a lot of the things in the, in the membership presentation, the whole, what is it, the I M A agreement and the Plan B, those go way outside of the scope of what I think we can, we can get involved in. But as far as the conditions and those things derivative from the conditions, I think, I think we can offer our comments, which we've done.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I appreciate that, and I hope you appreciate that we really do need to review the bounds of the permit, the permit. And the permit refers to a set of plans, a set of conditions, and a project description in that condition. And some of the things that you raised require some further investigation, and some of them, frankly, are not at all addressed. And that's where, you know, that we're in this interesting position of trying to protect private interests in a, in a permit application. That's different than where we typically are. So we certainly heard you, we'll look into it. I think more importantly, the Coral Casino-Biltmore folks heard everybody, and I think Bill Medel would like to address the commission, and I would suggest that might be appropriate because of the comment that you made at the very beginning, which is, it seems like this is something that needs to be resolved between the members and the operators of the Coral Casino in trying to figure out how to best operate this as a private club. And so if the commission
Thank you.
...thinks it's appropriate, I think it would be appropriate to just ask Bill to comment on that. What I'm really hoping for is, because I looked at Mr. Medel when Dan, when Commissioner Idelson made that comment, and he shook his head, meaning I think he does want to enter into some sort of a mediation or arbitration process, so that's why I've asked.
All right.
Because frankly, some of this is just beyond staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know government does not want to get involved in how to operate a business, and I know those aren't the intentions. The intentions today were the conditions of approval and compliance. Now, the audience has raised concerns that they have regarding operational and management decisions. And I can agree that we would work, sit down with staff and try to get back more information to the commission so that staff has more information that they can put together in another staff report to you, if that's your, if that's your goal today. But we are happy to sit down with staff, review some of the concerns that you just mentioned to Ms. Black, and we can certainly work together on that.
Actually, Mr. Chair, what I was responding to was the suggestion of Commissioner Idelson to have the member committee and the Coral Casino operators enter into some sort of mediation. And I envision that as really mediation without us there. Frankly.
We're happy to do that, too. I just
I mean, I'm happy to get more information. I don't mean to say that the first part isn't warranted.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Medel, can you cause that to happen?
Yes, sir. We, as long as, I don't, I think the Members Committee should adopt a subcommittee that we can sit down together and go over some of the main complaints that they've had, and we'll try to get them answers.
Could this happen in thirty days?
I believe so.
A subcommittee and your representatives will meet in good faith and discuss this.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Would you
Mr. Idelson?
Would you agree to a mediator being present?
No. That's, I mean, it's, we're following the condition of approval as it states, it's meaningful consultation. These are the battles we've been having over the years, with members wanting certain things, and there's some things we just cannot provide. And if we can't provide it, we'll give them answers why.
Mr. Medel, I think you can carry that out without
Right.
...any further comment from us. I would say, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel. I think we gave staff feedback. I think when you have something in response to that, we'd like to see it. I don't know when that will be, but when you get to it. So if, unless there are any last-minute things, I think we will adjourn this meeting officially, and the commission will reconvene
Adjourn to your training.
...for a workshop.
Mr. Chair, is it clear that, are my colleagues clear that the, that it is our recommendation not to accept this report?
We have received the briefing, we have not accepted.
Is that
Accepted.
Everyone's in on that?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, why don't you just put that into a motion that the commission adopts?
Okay.
I think that'd be best.
I move that we recognize the compliance report and that the commission does not accept the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staff, thank you. People in the audience, thank you very much.
People in the audience, thank you very much.